Committee meeting for May 15, 2017 to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we have, do we have anybody here who wants to talk in public comment? Come forward and just state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Brady. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10. I have two daughters currently in the Plymouth Public School system. I came here tonight to request that the school use its district communication system, both phone and email, to remind and encourage the community that local elections are being held this Saturday. Border participation in the US is one of the worst in the developed world. Turnout for local elections in Plymouth is typically in the teens, and that is barely half of the poor national showing. Many people, excluding you, who I think are painfully familiar with having to run everything through multiple layers of town government every year, don't realize that the greatest opportunity to affect change on government is at the local level. Using the district communication system would be a simple, nonpartisan way for the school system to reinforce the lesson taught in classrooms. Voting is a right, and it is the responsibility of citizens to execute that right. My wife and I always take our daughters with us to vote, because we want to normalize it for them in the hopes that they never see it as optional. If we want our children to have a bright future, both schools and parents need to contribute to the process, and I think in this case, the school system can easily contribute. I brought a flyer with me tonight. This was prepared by the political action group, Indivisible Plymouth, which I think some of you are familiar with. It's a simple, nonpartisan message to encourage voting. Kim, your fellow committee member, has access to a digital version of this flyer, so it can easily be included in the email, along with whatever language the district feels is appropriate for the important message. I sincerely hope that this request is taken seriously, and I look forward to the phone call and email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else for public comment? Wonderful, then we will move on to comments from our student representatives, from, starting with North today.
So today, we had our high honors breakfast for students who received high honors for one, two, or three quarters of the school year. So we had a lot of students, and we'd like to congratulate every one of them that were able to attend. Auditions for Plymouth North acapella groups, Northern Lights, Girl Treble, and Menergy are on May 30th and 31st, so there'll be more information to come with that. We had voting for student council elections, and today, we just found out who everyone would be for the election, so congratulations to everyone who made it. And then seniors are reminded to go on to their novants and create, and complete the graduation survey, which should be completed prior to participation in graduation. Plymouth North's graduation will be on Saturday, June 3rd, at 9:30 a.m., and it'll be at the football field. And then, for upcoming events for seniors, May Fest is Wednesday, May 17th. Senior Athlete Awards Night is Sunday, May 21st. Hypnotize Show is Wednesday, May 24th, and Senior Show is Thursday, May 25th during school. And then, Junior Prom will be on this Friday. MCAS for grade 10 was held, will be held on Tuesday, May 16th, and Wednesday, May 17th. And then, PNN will air their final show, their live show, this Thursday.
Oh, okay, sorry. And then we'll move on to South.
Okay. So, the class of 2017 had their top 10 breakfast this morning. Students who are currently ranked in the top 10 in the class were invited, along with their parents, to a wonderful breakfast prepared by our culinary students. Tomorrow evening will be Senior Showcase for all technical vocational programs. This will be an opportunity for graduating seniors to display all that they have accomplished over the past four years. Also, the class of 2017 will be selling senior dinner dance tickets for $40 all throughout this week, so make sure you grab your ticket for June 1st. Final exams for seniors will be beginning on Monday, May 22nd. Those who have received an A each term may be exempt from the finals, so make sure you talk to your teachers. The juniors had a very successful prom this past Friday at French Indian Pond. And congratulations to South Girls Track, who won the Andover's Booster Invitational. Drug Story Theater has recently visited Plymouth South. They gave a wonderful presentation at night for families, and then again for our freshmen on May 12th. Also, along the same topic was Katie Maroney, who also spoke about the importance of a single decision when dealing with drug abuse. And she spoke to the seniors at South. It was a very moving presentation. The senior art show will be May 18th at 6:00 p.m., so please stop by and see all the wonderful work these students have been doing. And lastly, May 21st is the Senior Athletic Awards Night at 6:00 p.m., which will honor all athletes who participated in a sport this year.
Thank you both so much. As always, there's a lot going on, so it's an exciting time of year. All right, and now we'll move on to old business. Does anybody have any updates? I know you wanted to go through old business.
Yep, no.
Okay, go ahead.
Take it back if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
I apologize. I was running very late today, and I'm here, but it was close, so I apologize. Nancy's waving at me. Oh, it's your last meetings. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Dargy. Well, thank you very much. You both did a great job, as always. Now, you're both seniors, right?
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, I won't be handing you your diploma this year. Bummer, eh? But somebody will be, and they'll be all excited about it, so I hope you, I hope you have a great time.
Thank you.
Do you both know what schools you're going to?
Hamilton College.
Hamilton, nice.
UMass Dartmouth.
And UMass Dartmouth, wow, very nice, great, very good. Well, congratulations. And thank you for helping us out here.
And girls, just, you can take your nameplate, and I know you'll probably place it prominently in your room somewhere.
We don't give you much, but we do give you a nameplate.
Yeah, in your dorm room, everybody can know who you are and all that stuff.
I am so hard.
But thank you so much for committing to do this.
Thank you.
Good job, and good luck. We'll see you, see you at graduation.
Max wasn't able to be here, but he wished he could.
He was also, very good. Old business, so as everybody knows, this is my last night as chair. I have another year. It's not like I'm going away forever, but I won't be chair, so... The goal tonight was to clean up the old business and leave everything nice and clean for my successor, so... Dr. Maestis with that?
Sure. I don't know that some of these will be clean. They might be polished off, but they...
That's close enough.
So, let's just walk through these, and we're going back from school year 15, 16, regarding an issue that was brought up with family emergency contact paperwork, and we have made some progress on this. Ms. Backman from our data management office has really worked to try to integrate our Aspen portal to give parents earlier information, so they can actually go in and verify information. So, that is one piece that has been upgraded last year. We will send email out again to parents to give them information to help us with collecting more and more of that information, so we don't have to do it through paperwork. But there is still that necessity to do some of this paperwork through the first day, first week of school, so... But we are working at trying to minimize that, and with the effort that Ms. Backman has put out there, I think it's, we're making some progress. So, although we have made progress, this is something that I would expect to be on the old business agenda for a while, until we actually get to the point where we can have a cyclical registration process. I think one of the dilemmas that we've heard from parents for quite some time is handwriting fatigue the first couple of days of school, and how can we minimize that when you have students at, multiple students at one school, or multiple students at different schools across the district? Is there any mechanism or any wisdom to creating a single login, but yet a single source or single point of entry? Which is what we're shooting for, so that's what we're working at, although this is something that haunts school districts every year. We're working on a solution. Hopefully, we can, in the years to come, have something that'll help and pick away at this over time. So, I don't see a solution immediately, but I do see that we'll continue to work at this. All right?
Okay, recycling?
Moving on to recycling. This is a recycled answer. What I will tell you is that we have made some level of progress with recycling. This is a town issue that we need to be in coordination with the town. I know Ms. Frye has met with some of the town management to really take a look at how we can involve our schools into the recycling process a little bit, at a little bit higher level. Right now, we do paper recycling. I know I did get an inquiry from Plymouth North High School that the students were very interested in doing a student-driven paper recycling model. And we do have dispensers or receptacles at every school that can actually do that. The issue that we're running into is plastic, and those are some of the areas that we need to work on, because we would need a separate receptacle and a separate mechanism to pick them up, which then involves the town and the town management of how they're going to actually take those products and dispose of them. So, this is a process that we have been working on probably for at least seven or eight years, maybe longer.
Yeah.
And I anticipate that we will get more and more pressure from our students, primarily because they are very concerned that we need some level of recycling. You know, knowing that we do it at home, everyone is really conscious about that, how do we follow it up in school? So I think that's one of the things that we're working on, but it lands up becoming an issue around how do we manage it, so...
And if it's a negotiation issue, we just make sure that when we go through the next round of negotiations that we have that on our radar?
It actually is something that we need to, I think we need to flush a model out so that we can present it through the negotiation mechanism, but I think we need to get a model in place, and also identify what is necessary to be able to remove those products once they're collected. That is our biggest dilemma. So, but I think we do have, there is a possibility of something coming up. I know, years ago, I went to, back in my assistant superintendent days, so this is probably 10, 11 years back, I would go to the recycling committee here in town, and we would talk about the dilemmas which are still real today. So, it hasn't changed a lot, so we need to continue to work at this. With that said, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Begley.
Dr. Sorenson?
Michelle had a question, too?
You're good.
Okay. You have one?
I know I do it, I do it in all of my offices in three towns, but it's not, it's not free. In order to have the plastic picked up, the paper picked up, and other, that's a fee that we pay. So, it would have to be a budget item at some point if we're going to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Badger?
Well, I was just going to say that the discussions that you're having with the town is that to get involved with the single stream, so you don't even have to worry about... No, okay. Because I mean, we all have single stream in our houses.
Well, because we have, you have to understand that there are different vendors that remove waste and recycling products from your home, and there's ones that the town has the ability to manage. So, when you take a look at how we get rid of waste in our schools, they're our vehicle. We do have two trash, two trash trucks that have the ability to remove our trash, and we actually take it to CMAS for disposal. There are other receptacles that we have on site, but we would need some level of understanding of who's going to remove those other receptacles, and who's going to pay fees associated with the removal of that.
Yep, okay.
Now, when you're at home, it's a little different, because there's a vendor that is actually picking it up, and they take it to some other location. Keep in mind that when plastic and products are dropped on the floor at CMAS, they are then transported somewhere else. So, it's, it is a costly measure, but it's something that I look forward to the day that we can have a presentation here at school committee that will flush out exactly what our recycling stream is in the district, because it will most likely look different than what it looks like at home, because of how we remove those receptacles in our school system.
It's just bad optics.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we've got the whole town doing it, but we don't have the school system doing it.
Yeah.
But for legitimate reasons, but still, we want to encourage children to go home to their houses and recycle and everything. Kind of is a good start right here.
And Mr. Begley, I do have to give a lot of credit to a lot of students and staff in the district, because in many of our schools, you know, we have clubs and teachers actually remove plastic, and they take it to the transfer station. You know, paper, we can remove. Cardboard, we need to figure out, because cardboard is another issue that needs to be completely separate than regular trash, because the town of Plymouth gets fined for cardboard being mixed in with regular trash, and that needs to be separate. We do have some cardboard dispenser, receptacles that need to be deployed, but that's another effort that we need to consider, how that's going to take place. But again, it's going to take sitting down and getting everybody in the room and hammering it out, and figuring out what the costs are.
Very good.
Thank you.
So the next one was the Common Core Park informational video.
Yeah, I think this was presented as a concept of how we use our TV production studio to actually get information out to the population of our stakeholders. We have demonstrated that it works with the reading recovery video, but I think our vision, in the sense, is trying to get more and more educational video, instructional for parents out there. Not only park, but math, ELA. Give parents information on the type of adoptions that we have for textbooks and curriculum assistance and things of that nature. So, with that said, I would anticipate that as the years go forward and months go forward, we will have more and more of that going forward, very similar to the instructional video that was sent out regarding our reading recovery program. So, that is a direction of our educational television studio, and I would expect that to happen more moving forward. Okay?
Okay. Health curriculum?
The health curriculum, you want to talk about that a little bit?
A few things have transpired since we brought this up. One, we started looking at the CDC breakdown, which really gets into eight components of essential school health. And now Carolyn Rains, our School Health Director of Nurses, has reinstated the School Health Advisory Council, which is a great group to look not only at our health curriculum, but to look at our practices across the district in terms of behavioral health, medical health, nursing, plus we're also looking at our health curriculum in PE. We have a group that are going to be working this summer, elementary, middle, and high, to look at how that aligns. We've been doing some work in this past, this past year, this past summer, and we're going to be continuing that with our new elementary health educator. My initial recommendation down the road would be to expand health education, of course, to all the grades in the elementary, which takes staff. So that's something that if I were to make a recommendation like that, I would have that prepared before a budget season, where it would be on a list of things if we were in, in the event that we were in a place that we were looking to do that, that I would have a clearly articulated message of what that would look like. That being said, we still will be looking, regardless of staffing, we'll be looking at our curriculum this summer to, you know, ensure that it's very well articulated, elementary, middle to high. Right now, our students in, as you know, in grades four and five will receive health education in the elementary. They have an opportunity to receive it in all the middle school grades, and then receive it in high school. So, we're looking to do some adjustments there. But I do really do feel beyond the health education that happens in the classroom, we have to look at our practices, our policies and whatnot. And I feel strongly that the School Health Advisory Council, that our nurse leader, Mrs. Rains, has reinstated, which I'm a part of, will be a great opportunity to really look at our practices across the district.
Okay, just one comment, and then... So, on this one, I think we're all committed. We've taken prior votes. Let our feelings be known that we're behind beefing up the health program. So, moving forward, just to what you had just said, figuring out what would the cost be, what's the goal we want to have, what's the cost, and getting that in front of us, so we can start putting it up on the board and getting it on a timeline somewhere. Because I think right now, with all the drug issues we have, and we want to get out in front of this as soon as possible, and really go back to a very robust health curriculum, so... Dr. Sorenson?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I got lucky.
Well, it's done.
Thank you. All right. The next one is the minimum failing grade.
This particular item was brought up, and we put it on the agenda for discussion with the school committee. We had it on our agenda with our principal coordinator director meetings, and it was an item that's been, you know, battered around for a while about, at the high school level, should we have a minimum failing grade? And that is an issue that our teachers have brought up, our coordinators, directors, principals have discussed for quite some time, and we have met to discuss this. We've had it on our agenda a couple of different times, and it seems that we've probably spent about two hours on this, and we don't have an answer as to what our recommendation is. And I think that's what we discussed during our retreat during the winter. And that's, this is something that would take a great deal of consensus from all departments to really take a look at how it would impact our structure. And, but it's something that I think is doable. But again, I think everyone has to understand what their parameters are with it. And one of the reasons why it was brought up is because some of our students, if they fail miserably first semester, they have basically a very difficult time making up that grade in the second semester. So, is it beneficial for a student that might have some level of hardship that first semester, to have a minimum failing grade that would at least give them the opportunity to get caught up and actually pass that course the last semester? Which is something that we have discussed. Again, there's some level of philosophical disagreement to that, but again, I think that's, you know, from all sides, we're trying to look at what makes sense to us. We have also had the opportunity to investigate what other schools do, and there are some schools that have a minimum failing grade, and traditionally, it does not exist, but there are some school districts that have done it. So, it's something that we are considering, and we will bring more information to the committee once we have some level of determination of the recommendation we would make to school committee.
So, when I, when we first started talking about this quite a while ago now, I mean, we're talking about a year, two years, I mean, here, we have a note back a year, but it goes back even further than that. It seemed like a kind of a common sense sort of thing. But then, as time's going by, and I'm seeing that there's no consensus, then I'm thinking, there's obviously more sides to this story than we see.
Well, it's also, excuse me, you know, we talked about that first term minimum grade, but, you know, because of hardship or issues. Well, sometimes those issues, the same issues happen third term or fourth term, so it's really not, you know, the circumstances are the same, but they've happened in the fourth term. So, is, do you give that up? So, we've had philosophical, not debates, but discussions about things like that. Do you, is it a one-term policy? Is it a, is it a policy that would go across all four terms? Some districts have done it well. Some have had less than desirable results from it. So, it's, it hasn't been as easy as we thought it would be.
What would be some of the negative results that you've heard about?
I think that there've been a rare occasion where some students may, I don't say take advantage, but they feel that they're, they understand that the policy exists, so I don't have to necessarily...
So they don't try really hard, and they just...
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's, I think that's a little subjective to really know if that's entirely accurate.
So you run the risk of someone gaming the system, but...
Yeah, then there is that possibility. I think the other issue, too, is how do we clearly explain and articulate how this works and how we gain some support from staff, so that it's done consistently? Because you can't do it in one department and not do it in another. You can't do it in one teacher's classroom, but not another. So, it has to be an all or nothing opportunity, and that creates, again, there's a great deal of discussion. There've been very, very good discussions, but again, a lot of things come up. A lot of people recite situations in different schools of, about how things have happened, and how it didn't work because of X, Y, and Z. So, we've had all those discussions, and we thought we might be able to make some traction, and we kind of just got back to squared zero, because we really have not had some level of understanding of what would be the direction or recommendation to bring to this table.
Okay. Does anybody have any follow-up questions you want to ask? So then we'll just leave this one out there as ongoing?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Begley, I think we have one that blows out for you tonight, right here, this next one. This next one is reference to the school committee and having representation at the January 2017 NSBA Advocacy Institute. And we also had representative members at the annual conference this year. So, this desire was actually exercised, and we did have members at the national conference, and also at the Advocacy Institute.
Very good, we can close one.
There you go.
It's gone.
You feel a little better?
Yeah, I'm going to declare success. Home internet access.
The, the home internet access has been on our minds for quite some time. Dr. Sorenson did provide some level of insight when we talked about perhaps surveying our families next year when we have registration, so we can get a very clear understanding of what those percentages are across the district, of who has internet, and so we can get a better feel. And we have anecdotal information on who does and who doesn't, but how can we get some better data on that? And it's also a possibility of surveying students as an exit interview or whatever, to get more information. So, that is definitely a possibility. We have not put anything in place specifically yet, but I would say by the beginning of next school year, that our goal is to have that data, so that we can make decisions based on that, so that we can then research, do we need to put a program together to offer internet packages? Because there are vendors that do that. That'll offer a reduced connectivity for families that might need support, so that's something that...
The connectivity just for the schoolwork, not connectivity for the family.
Well, that's...
They have it, they have it.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Otherwise, it could might not get on.
It'd be the hesitation on a lot of carriers to go down that road.
Yeah, yeah.
This school is surveying, what this school is doing, PCS is doing right now. But, yeah, just, I had a meeting with Mr. Palladino regarding this issue and his particular building. So, he is actually surveying, or will be, and I think he may be rolling this out next year, but surveying the students while they're with us. Not just finding out if you have internet access at home, but what kind of devices do you have available to you? Because that makes a big difference, because if they have a cellphone versus a tablet, we want to know what they have available, when they have available. Do they use it for schoolwork? Do they rely on the computers at school to get their work done? So we can really get a sense of, you know, access, true access. What does that mean beyond just the internet connectivity? So, I think, I think we have a lot, I think we can learn from what this building is doing and see if we can try to replicate that somehow to get a good sample from our students.
And could we just sample, like, say, okay, if you're on free and reduced lunch, this is one more thing that we would look at to see if we could assist? So they already went through a whole bunch of criteria to say that there's a need in the household. We could use that as a measure, because we do use that as a measure for other areas outside of lunch, obviously.
We would be able to cross-reference that information with students. I mean, I think that's one of the goals, is to find out who doesn't, and how we can actually help target some level of support to get those resources available. So I think our goal is to identify, first of all. And then, second of all, how do we align those kind of resources? So I think we can, we can definitely find out.
Right.
Data that we have.
The first thing we need to know is if there's even a problem there to fix.
Yeah.
How many people don't have access now? And we still, in this town, the library provides free access. Obviously, the schools, if they're at the schools, they could come earlier, go later, study halls, whatever. They don't call it that anymore, but you know what I mean, yeah?
Absolutely.
So this one is also going to be a long-term one that we'll just keep there and keep an eye on. And then the last one was the kindergarten registration paperwork.
Yes, we actually discussed this with our principal coordinator directors group and we're going to work at having summer registration hours so that anyone across the district, if they're new to the district or if they're a new kindergarten family to the district, that they can register at a common location. Looking at, we did this years ago and we'd have published hours, you know, two, three days a week that we can actually have staff. We did at this building, there'd be a school nurse here because we have a school nurse for summer programming. So all those health record pieces can be taken care of. If there's any questions regarding health, they can ask the people or the nurse about that. And also, keep in mind that we'll have somebody here that is very familiar with school registration so they can answer all the questions when they come in. So we did this many years ago and for some reason, I don't remember why we stopped doing it, but we want to kick that up and have that started probably here at PCIS. It seemed like a common location. And we do have summer programming here, which we do have a nurse onboard so that kind of consolidate it. So that's the goal, is to have this operational by the summer.
So be ready for the next school year?
Yes.
So we'll leave this one on also, just so that we'll follow back.
Yeah, we'll give you an update in September as to how it went. But we'll have an operational this summer.
Or better yet, like at our summer retreat to maybe make sure that it's gonna be in place.
Absolutely.
For the start of the next school year. Yes? So, thank you.
No problem.
So then with that, so the old business list is tidy and no glaring open things. And now new business. Anybody have anything new they would like to add?
Oh, sorry, just a question. Do we, maybe I'm showing my ignorance. Do we program the traffic lights outside the school? Because they still do 20 miles an hour at noon time and we don't have any kindergarteners coming and going anymore.
Well, I will, I can address that. We don't program them.
I didn't think so.
It's Department of Public Works and I have to put in a request for a change. So they have to go out and connect a laptop or, I mean, the new, the one at South is digital, so it's a little bit more complex than some of the newer ones. So we would. So Dr. Sorenson, just tell me where they're at. I can get it changed.
I will, later.
We can put that on, because a while ago when you spotted the broken one at South Elementary, we had it on the, you know, we were tracking it under old business then, so we might as well...
Yeah, we'll...
Put it down under old business and then just track it by school or something.
And it's also a time zone change. It doesn't automatically change. And that's one of the issues at South Al.
Daylight saving time?
I can tell you that federal furnace...
On daylight saving time.
Still go at noon.
South elementary.
Okay.
South's also too.
Well, it's not bad to have the cars loaded.
Cool.
It's too bad we didn't program.
Any others?
I don't think so.
Okay, then. Reports and proposals from the superintendent.
Yes, I just have a couple of items to report on tonight. Just a reminder to the school committee, tomorrow night we're meeting at seven o'clock at Nathaniel Morton Elementary School. At six o'clock, I'm sorry, not at seven, sorry. So we'll meet with the board's selectmen. And then we just want to remind everybody, as our guest did earlier, that we have an election this Saturday and encouraging people to vote. And I did have the opportunity to attend Drug Story Theater last week at South High School. And I tell you, I give the students a great deal of credit who are involved in that to get up on the stage and kind of act out what they have experienced. We did have presentations at South High School and North High School. We'll have presentations at South Middle School as well. And the last thing I want to report on is, usually I don't talk about issues like this, but I do have some level of concern regarding an issue that we saw last week. And this was relative to brownies that were in our school that had marijuana in them and we had some students that ingested them. And I really want our community to be aware that this is something that I am concerned about. We have a number of students that have experienced this at a time that they need to be focusing on their education. And they also had the opportunity to have access to them in our school, which is something that is troubling to me. We have worked with Plymouth Police Department and one of the things that I did realize is throughout this whole process is, you know, a brownie is very similar to other products that have potential of being sold in our community. And gummy bears and things of that nature are out there. And I want our community to be very vigilant and please talk to your children because these products are out in our community. They have been, they have been for years. It's just that I think the mentality on the acceptance of marijuana is at a level that is really impacting our families and our kids. But I'll tell you, last week was not a fun week for us. It was very unsettling for the students and staff at one of our schools. I will tell you that our staff, our nursing staff, our administration, our teachers did an absolutely fantastic job of providing support for those students. But keep in mind, we care about our students, we care about how they take care of themselves. But like I said, I typically don't bring up issues like this, but I'm very concerned that we need to have some level of understanding of education about these products because from my understanding, they seem to be more and more common in the community. And I think it's important for us to have conversations with our students and our families about how this can impact their life. So with that said, Mr. Begley, I know it's an uncomfortable subject to bring up, especially on TV, especially in front of school committee, but it was an uncomfortable time for us last week and I wanted to share that with the committee.
No, it's good. And actually, it points back to the earlier discussion we just had about the health curriculum and making sure that, you know, people know what is out there right now and then they're making smart decisions.
Absolutely.
Because we didn't have smart decisions last two weeks.
No.
So what did I miss the first few minutes? You mentioned that we had a guest.
Oh, the comment.
Yes, we had a member of the, what's the name of the organization?
Indivisible Plymouth.
Indivisible Plymouth.
And a parent.
He's a parent. He's still here. And he presented the desire for this organization to implore parents to vote.
Good.
And to bring their children to vote so they can understand the process.
Excellent. Very good. Sorry I missed that.
So we'll be following up with some correspondence. We do our usual media feed. We'll get information out to parents to encourage them to do that.
Very good.
So that's what it was.
And that's something I always harp on. You know, I'm gonna take another shot at it, but the idea that our coordinators might work harder to get the local political environment known to the children. So I know everybody always pays attention to the senate races and the, you know, congress and the president, but yeah, I'd like them to know that there is such a thing as a school committee and a planning board and a selectman.
Town meeting.
Town meeting and et cetera.
It's very fascinating to understand how a town meeting works and it takes a lot to understand it. And I think it'd be awesome for kids to really, I mean, it's great when I see some of the local scout groups watching town meeting. I mean, it's part of their badge process, so.
Yeah, I was thinking about it. Wouldn't it be, you know, logistically probably improbable, but if we could have a meeting or other boards could have a meeting during the school day at one of the schools and have it like, you know, that's one of their, come down to the auditorium or come down to the gym or wherever, and we conduct a regular meeting there so they could just see the process. And we can make sure that there were things during the meeting that would tie them in and involve them a little bit better. So they walk away with something.
You can do a review in the elementary handbook and the discipline code revisions.
It could be a mock.
That'll be a popular topic.
It could be a mock meeting that also includes some discussion too. I mean, it could be a mock meeting.
The mock, yeah.
Even doing mock meetings, that would be...
Through various scenarios and then...
I'm always open to try stuff like that.
Or play a TV.
You know...
That's a great suggestion. Perhaps when we're on the road.
Ms. Hunt?
Even if we put in subjects for that meeting, like I think when I reported out about my visit at the Edward Kennedy Institute, they do the congress, but they put, they have the kids argue like drones and things that are a little bit more exciting to them. So maybe we can just kind of pick out topics like that that would actually engage them a little bit more, but things that are relevant and things that we actually talk about.
Yeah. Cool.
Mr. Begley, just one other follow-up comment is, we do have, our schools are getting more and more into student council. And really, this is how their meetings as a council should operate in the sense of Robert Swilts of Order, protocol, how an agenda gets followed, actually constructed and then followed through the process. So I think it's, there's a lot of relevance to that.
And just the process, you know, I could see a PowerPoint that's just a, how you go through the budget process in town. You know, just the idea, you have to touch all these different committees. It's not as simple as everybody thinks. And that would be a great lesson for a child to learn and know how their local government works.
Right.
Retirements. Oh, sorry.
Yes. Thank you. We just have one retirement tonight to announce. Linda Horgan, who's a grade-two classroom teacher from Manomet. Nineteen years of service.
Very good. Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth Public Schools, I'd like to thank Mrs. Horgan for 19 years of service and wish her a happy retirement.
Very good. Now, Ms. Hunt, we have quite a few correspondences.
There are three pieces of correspondence tonight. An email to South High Athletics Director Scott Frye and coaches from a Marshfield parent who took an opportunity to express their delight at the sportsmanship and supportive behavior of the South... I'm like cut off right at the end here. South, sorry. "South athletes," I might say, "several of them and to both teams during the Division II cross-country track and field meet early in May." The second is a thank you letter from Science Coordinator Allison Riordan to the St. Vincent de Paul Society for their generous gift of Camp Invention scholarships that recognize not every student is geared towards the typical summer experience and camp experience and may benefit greatly from engaging as a young scientist or engineer. The last letter is from English Language Arts Coordinator Lisa White to Elks Lodge Number 1476, thanking the members for their generous gift of a set of books for each of Plymouth's eight elementary schools, reflecting the district's theme "Got Grit: Making the Impossible Possible" via the Gratitude Grant.
Very good. Thank you. Now we have the Manomet Elementary Schools School Improvement Plan. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight we have Dr. Frain and his school improvement team. They're here to provide a report on their progress and I think we have plenty of chairs for them, so.
Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome, everybody.
Scoot down.
Good evening. Just to piggyback on a couple of things that you were just talking about with regard to the correspondence, for that Camp Invention donation, I had the pleasure of seeing the reaction of one of our students when they found out that they were receiving that. And he is incredibly deserving and he's been walking on air ever since. So I'm very, very pleased with that. And also, I just wanted to thank Linda Horgan for her service at Manomet Elementary School. That announcement was just a few minutes ago, obviously. But we are absolutely thrilled for her and we wish her a long and happy retirement. So thank you very much for having us here today. I'm joined by five members of our 10-person board for the school council at Manomet Elementary School. Matthew Riordan is one of our parent representatives. Lauren Lesher is one of our moderate special needs teachers. Lori Rush is one of our parent representatives. Debbie Miller is one of our moderate special needs teachers. And then also Christine Kane is one of our parent representatives who joined our staff during the course of the year. So we're here to talk a little bit about the school improvement plan at Manomet. Tonight, what I'd like to do is to just do three things, to take a few moments to share some of our successes as we close out this current school improvement plan, and then also to talk about our survey data. Every two years, we do a stakeholder survey to gather information so that we can make informed decisions as we put together the new school improvement plan. So we've done that. And then finally, to hear from school council members about each of the four goals that we're proposing to put in place over the course of these next two years. So just a couple of things in terms of sharing some exciting trends that we're seeing. One of them is, since 2012, the Mass Department of Education, DESI, has released a statistic where they give you a percentile in your profile for your school, or overall school performance with regard to all the grade levels tested at your school. And one of the things that we've been thrilled with in each of those five years that they've produced that statistic is that we've maintained a very consistent level of performance. We've been in the top 30 percentile all five of those years of that statistic since 2012. And it's something where we're very proud of the fact that we've not only been consistent, we've been very proud of the fact that we've not only had some excellent performances by particular cohorts, but that we've been able to sustain excellence across all those different content areas and over cohort after cohort. So we're very proud of that and we know there's a lot of work to be done, but we wanted to make sure that we celebrate that each year as a staff to look at that and feel good about the fact that the kids are making those gains. A few of the highlights, again, specifically on that stat that I was just talking about with regard to the standardized testing. 2014, our science students in grade five achieved the top 2% in the entire state of Massachusetts in the science and technology assessment for that. Over the course of these last 10 years, they've routinely scored in the top 15% in the entire state over and over, that particular group. The third graders this past year were in the top 3.5% in the entire state of Massachusetts. And again, and what we're proud of is the fact that we're carrying this across content areas. In ELA, we've also been consistently having some very strong showings as well. This year, there are seven areas every year that are assessed through the MCAS at the elementary level. And in each of those seven, we're able to significantly outperform state averages with that. So it's something that we're very proud of. We've also seen a dramatic increase in student digital literacy with regard to the expanded use of Chromebooks. Something, as you know, in these last few years, they've come on more and more. Initially, when they came on, it was almost exclusively grades three, four, and five that had access to those. Well, we're all the way down into kindergarten now with regular daily use in all grade levels. And the boys and girls are very familiar with how to use them and how to use them as a useful tool, not something where they're simply watching a video or practicing a particular skill. They're using them more and more in very authentic ways. So we're very proud of that. That was one of the pieces that we put in place through the current school improvement plan and it's been very successful with that expanded access to those Chromebooks, of course, which is really important for that. We, in the arts at our school, we've got our grade-three after-school theater workshop institutionalized now as a regular happening. In the past, we've had our fall grade-four and five after-school theater workshop. We just now had our third year of grade-three doing that as well. And grade-three performed just the other night and they did a fantastic job. They did a matinee performance for our student body. So that's something that we're pleased to say has become institutionalized now in our school each spring for those grade-three students to have that opportunity. Another area that we're very proud of is something through, you know, the implementation of a full-time instrumental music program. The biggest impact that's had on our school is in the area of strings instruction. If you came into our school four or five years ago, you might have seen three, four, or five students taking strings instruction total in the whole school. We've got 22 students this year, 22 students participating, and that's just absolutely ballooned. Previously, we would have thought we just didn't have that kind of interest in that particular instrument, but it's just absolutely taken off. So we're thrilled with that. It's a very difficult instrument, set of instruments to play, but it's something that... to play, but it's something that the earlier we can get the boys and girls started with that, the better. And then also, one of the things that we did just two years ago was to participate in the Blue Ribbon Schools, Schools of Excellence Program, and we were pleased to achieve their Lighthouse School designation. So we're very proud of that as well. Those are just a few of those highlights that we wanted to make sure we share. And then the second area, as I mentioned, I wanted to talk about tonight was our stakeholder surveys. So we did a paper-based survey this year. We sent that out to all of our stakeholders at the school. We had a thirty-two percent response rate, so seventy-nine of our families responded to that. We used a Likert scale, a one-through-four Likert scale rather than a one-through-five, so that we didn't have any fence sitters going neutral on us. So it gave us a little bit more of an authentic look at the perceptions of our stakeholders as we did that. So there were four narrative prompts as well to sort of give us information in a few of the other areas. So these are the results on the Likert scale items. We were very pleased to see that all of the means for the multiple choice items or the Likert scale items were between 3.41 and 3.86. Even within that, we tried to look and say, okay, some of these can be grouped in terms of certain trends we might be seeing that are lower on the agree versus the higher end of that. So we wanted to sort of take note of that and see what we could glean from that, although they were all positive. Items one through four were closer to agree than strongly agree. When taken together, they show an opportunity for us to look at some of the different aspects of academic rigor and how we can continue to take steps in the right direction with that. So some of those, I know you have an electronic copy of that survey, some of those different items sort of could be categorized that way, and we noticed that those numbers were slightly below some of the other ones. We were thrilled to see that three of the other items there, five, six, and twelve, were all on the higher end of that, and they all relate to the types of relationships that we have with our students and our staff. So we were pleased to see that that was the case, and that was the perception that our stakeholders have outside of the school in terms of parents and the families of our students. At the school, we perceive it that way as well, but it's nice to see that correlates with what our families are thinking as well. In terms of the written survey items, the narrative responses, we sort of took two, excuse me, four big takeaways from that. Some of the questions talked about extracurriculars that you'd like to see at the school. One of the ones that came up, I think it was about eight or ten times, and it wasn't even asking specifically, we asked about extracurricular in general. We had about eight to ten people talk about wanting some form of exposure to Spanish language, Spanish speaking. And I know a few years ago, we did a little bit of that in an after-school program, and it was funny because after these surveys were in, I don't know if the parent had it on their mind, maybe they had just filled in the survey, but I had a parent in the lobby stop me and ask if maybe they could do a little bit of a after-school club for Spanish. So I was thrilled to hear that. That was just sort of a volunteer club that she was interested in doing. We would like to do something on more of a little bit broader scale, and it's something that we'd like to look at because it's something that we heard from a number of different stakeholders. It wasn't something where it was just one or two comments. So it was interesting to see that. Another area referenced was the need to continually consider those students on the higher end, working above grade level, and to make sure that they're continually pushed, which we have a lot of things in place for that, a lot of programming in place for that. But again, you try to say, okay, here's what we have in place, what are our next steps? What can we do next to continue to push that? We had some suggestions by several stakeholders around STEM and STEAM programming, both during school and after school, to continue to grow that, to provide increased opportunities in those areas, when we asked about the extracurricular in particular, to look at that. Many parents referenced communication. We talked about some of the different modes of communication, so several of them referenced that, expressing a preference one way or another with regard to modes of communication. Some cited specific examples of certain areas where they wanted to see more communication or a different type of communication or that type of thing. So we're reflecting on some of that information as well to see where we can enhance that. So with that said, we have four goals on the school improvement plan itself that were informed by that data, and it's something where I'm going to hand it off now. Let's see, this first goal here, Lauren, you're going to handle that one for?
Right next to me.
Goal one, you're right next to me, for goal number one. Go right ahead.
All right, sure. Okay, so goal number one is for us to refine our practices and deepen our understanding associated with the recently modified units of study at the elementary level with both reading and writing. In order to do this, we've outlined some specific proposed actions. The first is to use designated meeting times. For example, staff meetings, grade level meetings, building-based in services, to assess student writing within and also across grades using the learning progressions that are provided by the units of study, so that we can not only identify student strengths, but we can also identify next steps for instruction. We also propose to increase the teachers' usage of small, flexible strategy groups so that we can improve differentiation and address student strengths and needs as part of the writing workshop. In conjunction with staff, develop a plan for initiating the use of writing portfolios. These have been in several grade levels, and we want them across all grade levels as a context for student goal setting. And the last is to participate in professional development for administrators and district leaders on instructional leadership related to the best practices in writing instruction. This will help staff that's observing, teachers in the classroom, have a link and understand where the curriculum is going and what students are expected to do.
The second goal is to strengthen the connectedness of student technology use and the data yielded from it in order to further drive instruction. The proposed actions that were developed for this report, using staff meeting time, or staff meeting time will be allocated toward having a representative from Symphony Math and Lexia Reading into the school for presentations to all certificated staff to explain the nuances and features available for obtaining the data and tracking it from these two programs. In addition to giving that staff meeting time, also, grade level time will be allocated for small group follow-up with the same representatives. During this past school year, they have had some opportunities to bring the representative from Symphony Math, I believe. They came in and provided one-on-one assistance to faculty members, and they found this time to be invaluable, and they wanted to continue it. Thus, it's a part of this goal. Using that data, the literacy coach, math coach, and consulting teacher of literacy will provide staff on the, provide support to the staff on the utility of specific data and planning for individual students' needs. So taking that data and creating plans, differentiated plans for individual students to best meet their needs. The staff will significantly increase the incorporation of specific findings from these data mining efforts into their ongoing planning processes.
Our school improvement plan, goal number three, is to seek and take advantage of the logical links between the many social-emotional initiatives already in place at Manomet and to ensure the most cohesive experience and application possible for all students. In order to support this goal, we are proposing to, for Mr. Dr. Frain and his school psychologist, Mrs. Schmidlin, along with the school nurse, Luanne, to meet on a biweekly basis to discuss social-emotional programming in place, as well as to discuss the needs of all individual students across all grade levels. We discussed the opportunity, the wonderful opportunity that all Manomet students have to attend their Wellness Fair, the annual Wellness Fair, which is a broad experience for them to discuss things like nutrition, exercise, fitness, anything ranging from like karate to fire, water safety, and really looking at that day and linking some possible presentations related to social-emotional functioning and the ongoing school initiatives such as the Zones of Regulation curriculum that's being implemented, social thinking, as well as the Second Step Program that's already in place. So utilizing those programs as an opportunity for students to have a broader experience that day. Grade level meetings are held regularly, and they will be designated to discuss the present social-emotional programming that's already currently in place and what's working and what they might need to, you know, provide some more growth with in the area of social-emotional development. These steps will be taken to improve practices in place and begin to work on supporting students and linking the, not only their, you know, learning of the social-emotional skills that they're being taught, but the application of them within the classroom setting and in the school community. We spoke about opportunities for professional development, so teachers could not only be exposed to the curriculums, but also understand how they can use them and use the language on a daily basis to support the application of improving social skills within the school setting. And the progress monitoring that has to take place with that is often an important piece of RTI, or, you know, doing your data collection to see, you know, what is your level of effectiveness with the programs, and being able to hold those biweekly meetings to support gauging its effectiveness and collecting your data to see what areas are working and what areas we need to continue to work toward building.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our fourth and final goal is to build and develop an enriching partnership with our two designated sister schools in Plymouth, England, in preparation for 2020 celebrations. In working toward this goal, we are proposing the following actions. First, building administrators from each of the schools will participate in initial Skype sessions to work out many of the logistics associated with this partnership. And actually, we have, the first of these sessions is scheduled for tomorrow morning with the St. Maurice Primary School. Secondly, staff, I thought someone said something. Staff members will seek meaningful connections for coordinated work that align with grade level learning standards. We're planning on brainstorming as a staff some of the ways that we can ensure that the work being done within this partnership is still aligned with what we should be doing in regard to the designated learning standards. Our third proposal, proposed action, individual grade levels and our classrooms will establish partnerships that will include exchanges such as written items, visual arts, and digital work. Actually, what actually will take place will vary by grades in many of the cases. Some may share art, others may connect by writing, and that would include written or maybe email, and others may establish virtual connections such as Skyping. We will also have some anchor activities that connect us at the entire school level. And fourthly, our Manomet Elementary School visual arts teacher has traveled to Plymouth, England within this partnership, and will help to facilitate some aspects of work toward this goal. We're going to lean heavily on our visual arts teacher, Jamie, Jamie Cook, to help with the brainstorming and execution of some of this work. She's been to Plymouth, England earlier this year, I believe she went in February, and is actively working on some of the district-level connections being planned between these two communities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this point, if anybody has any questions?
Very good. Any questions? Mr. Morgan?
No, I just have a comment. I appreciate the survey you did. I thought that was excellent and the results that you got and the response rate of thirty-two percent, and that's actually a pretty good percentage in terms of surveys, because people average less than that. So that's a good way to reach out to the stakeholders and get some valuable information. So I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Badger?
I just have a quick question. I love the things that you guys are doing with Plymouth, England. Have you guys thought about doing any, I know the time difference in the language is a barrier, but with Shishigama, because we are sending more and more students over there every year, so it might be.
And the teachers from.
Sure, one of our teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something where, you know, it's something where we definitely, and I've been there as well.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's a tremendous connection that we have with that city as well. I think that certainly, the time difference wouldn't be an issue in terms of being able to try and making some of the connections. We could figure that piece out. I think right now, right now in these next six to eight months, it's going to be all that we can do to try and make sure that we get these connections going.
Yes.
But I think that's a natural progression to looking at how we can broaden that. And then maybe there's some sort of a triangle there.
Yeah.
Never know. Never know.
It could be fun.
Dr. Myastis, you wanted to add to that?
Just a point of information. The current mayor, the new mayor of Shishigama, one of his goals is to introduce English at the early elementary level.
Second grade, I believe.
Second. So I believe that this is a perfect opportunity as we travel this summer to find more about it, find out more about where they are, and maybe this will help that dialogue proficiency that they'd like to see happen.
Dr. Sorenson?
I've been mentoring some graduate students at Boston University from Asian students, and they told me that they must learn English in the first and second and third grades. So having said that, I hope you take Spanish and can run with it. I hope there's something you can work out to make a broader presentation. I think public education in this country probably lacks good, you know, foreign language foundation at the elementary level. The other thing I want to say is that you're meeting biweekly with the school psychologist and, there were three people on the list.
School nurse.
And the nurse, to talk about social emotion, this is really good, but also to speak about individual students' social emotionalities, because you guys know.
That's the purpose of those meetings, is to go individually down. And it also brings us to some discussions around attendance patterns for individual students and what the root causes of some of that might be. That's exactly the purpose of those, is to bring that to the individual student level.
Great, great program, because that's how we're going to reach these kids. Really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Oh, Ms. Hunt?
No, I just thought of that with Dr. Sorenson's comment. When my son was in, my middle son was in the first grade, we were in Wareham, and the first grade teacher just happened to speak French as a second language. And she used to actually start the class day every day with a greeting in French and the days of the week in like a little song. So I think, too, any classroom can do something like that, and it kind of gives them a little taste of what's to come. So, I mean, even if it's not an official part of the studies, if the teachers have an interest in it, they can introduce it into the classroom.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent job. Very well done. And I just want to comment that you always come up with creative, outside-the-box ideas and everything, and it's not missed on us. We appreciate it. And we like the way with Manomet, it's been trending over the last few years under your stewardship. Keep up the good work.
I appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you.
And now we move into another one of those out-of-the-box ideas.
All Manomet.
Yeah, there we go.
We're moving on to Manomet and the playground. So, Mr. Bagley, we're ready for another presentation by Manomet and the Home School Association.
Thank you.
And just to introduce, I just want to remind Dr. Frain that the school committee actually won a game show at North High School a couple of years ago, which was part of the fundraising effort in helping to get the playground off the ground. I know we had that, you know, this has been about two and a half years of fundraising, something like that.
It's been two full years, two full years. Absolutely. Plymouth South Middle won this year, so maybe we'll need to have a tournament of champions. I don't know.
We were too slow, we were too slow to get involved on that one this year.
Had we been there, we probably would have been.
It was a great event. We appreciate your support.
They didn't sign up in time, Pat. I know, that was.
We had, well, we had sixteen teams, and we had twenty-two express interest by the time of the week of. It was fantastic.
You'll be there if you had all twenty-two teams.
Thank you very much for, again, having us today for our playground proposal. I'm joined tonight by the treasurer from our Home and School Association, Beth Lopes, and also Tim Pesco from Childscapes Playgrounds. Tim's not only the selected vendor for this project, but he's also a playground safety inspector, a certified playground inspector as well. So what we wanted to do is to just take a few moments to share with you a little bit about our process, where we are, and then to field any questions you might have regarding the project. So the current playground that's out there, the vast majority of it was put in place about fourteen years ago, and a lot of the plastic structures, slides, some of the different elements are fine, aside from maybe scratches and some vandalism and those types of things. But there are a lot of areas there that have become unsafe due to rubber coating peeling back over metal and different areas that it's not something. back over metal and different areas that, it's not something where we can take the pieces we like and, you know, pluck them apart from the other pieces. It's sort of that dilemma sometimes that we bet, we looked at, you know, the idea of maybe taking certain things apart and ordering new stairwells and retrofitting different pieces of it, and it just wasn't something that was feasible. So, but we knew something needed to be done in terms of the condition of it. So we set forth, two years ago, as you had mentioned, to begin fundraising. Another set of issues we have with the playground as well is that you can see the surface is sand, which isn't something that's accessible. So, so that's a problem for us. The other problem that you'll see is some of the equipment, well, you won't necessarily see it from looking at this, but some of the equipment isn't up to code right now. For example, we have the Whirl. It breaks my heart because we just became, just came before your committee about seven or eight years ago to put that in. Well, at now, Tim was kind enough to inform me that you need to have a governor on those now, and that one doesn't have a governor. So it needs to go. So some issues along those lines in terms of compliance in addition to the accessibility. And then of course, some of the pieces that were put in in 2003 are no longer there. One of them was so rusted over a few years ago that we needed to remove it. Another one was vandalized back in 2003, about a week after, you know, it was put in. So it's something where the existing playground structure is missing some elements, has some elements that are no longer compliant, and also the surfacing itself. By the way, to surface that with a rubberized surface, we looked at different options, would have been, I think it was about $70,000 to rubberize that type of a surface for the entire thing. But there are other ways to be in compliance, and we'll talk about those tonight as well. So in 2015, two years ago, we set forth with the goal of $60,000 that we were going to try and fund. There was no science behind that number. It was just something where we said, okay, what's a reasonable dollar figure that we think might be attainable where we could do something significant? So we set that as a goal and moved forward. Right now in the playground account, we have $42,000 there. We have a number of different donations that are pending that we're hoping on. We also have some field use funds that we're going to be able to apply toward this as well, to try and get as close to that $60,000 figure, if not beyond it. So we're hoping on some of those pieces that are, that are still pending, that we can get to there and beyond there, and we believe we can. So we're hopeful that over the course of these next two months, we can obtain those additional donations. It's something where some of them are grants that are pending. Some of them, we have one board tonight that's voting on a donation toward our playground fund. So there are a lot of irons in the fire that we're hoping on, and I think we'll, I think we'll, we'll get there. It's, it's going to be interesting as we try to get there. Wherever we get as far as a dollar figure, that's what we'll build. We'll build as much of what we're presenting tonight as we can, and then maybe move into another phase of it if need be. So on March 21st, we had three vendors come in. Three different vendors came in to present on the playground. We asked each of them to come in with a $50,000 and a $70,000 proposal, just to give us an idea of what that might look like and what we could do for that amount of funds. They all, all three came in and were very impressive. Childscapes was selected as our vendor. They put in the Indian Brook Playground last year as well. One of the things that we liked about Childscapes, all three of the groups are from Massachusetts. Childscapes is right up the road in Marshfield, which is very appealing to us in terms of being able to work that way, in terms of handling anything that we need, in terms of access and being able to communicate and, and have Tim come out on site. In addition to that, their pricing in terms of the equipment and in terms of the labor costs were, were better. They were the best price to get the same job done. So the current proposed project for what you see there, and I'll go to a bigger image of it in a minute, is $61,733. So that includes the demolition and removal of the existing playground. And I went out, you know, just a couple of months ago and looked and said, gee, you know, maybe we'll do this ourselves in terms of the demolition and removal of it. So it's a lot more involved when you're talking about removing cement footings and doing some of the things that would need to be done in terms of the demolition and removal. So this quote includes Childscapes doing that and includes much of the preparation work. So we've got a community build that's scheduled for July 29th, Saturday, July 29th. Prior to that, and a couple of days before that, Tim and his representatives will be there prepping the area, doing some, and I can have him speak to that a little bit, doing some of the initial excavating so that when we have hopefully 30 or so people come on July 29th, we're ready to roll and have them be able to be productive and to be able to actually assemble the playground. The price includes the equipment. It does not include the cost of cement, so we're seeking a donation that way, and we're working on that right now. So as I mentioned, that price includes having a community build as opposed to having a team from Childscapes come out. It does include having a certified playground installation professional there to serve as the general contractor for that project. So at this point, you can see the playground there that we're, that we're looking at for that price. So that's, if we reach that dollar figure, that's the playground that we can put in. Couple of different things that you'll notice, the rubberized surfacing, again, that's the surfacing, if we did the whole area, that would have been $70,000. We were able to have Childscapes install those two strips there, and that'll bring us out to where there's an accessible swing. So you can see the accessible swing there. There's also a toddler swing there because it's as much a community playground as it is a school playground. We've got a lot of after-school activities out there in the field. We've got a lot of people there on the weekends using it as well. And then you'll see a rubberized surface there that goes out to the main structure as well. The wood chips, and you can speak to that, Tim, as well, the wood chips are in compliance. And, and do you want to address that a little bit?
Yeah, the, the certified wood fiber that we are going to put on there, if we did not do any rubber surfacing, they are ADA accessible. But I, I still like to have those rubber pads for the, for the wheelchairs. And actually, I told Pat and Beth that those rubber pads weren't even in the, in the price. We're actually going to do those for them with some extra material we have left over from another job. That's my kind of preference to have that rather than the mulch, because the mulch tends to move around a little bit. So what we usually do is, if somebody wants the mulch to be accessible, we kind of compact it in layers so the wheelchairs are able to get over it. But over maybe three or six months, it loosens up a little bit, so it needs to be compacted again. And with people's budgets and stuff, it's, it's tough to keep that, keep that maintained. So that's why I offered to do the rubber pass for them there. But we are going to do the wood fiber on the rest of the area.
And at this point, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. One other thing I wanted to point out is you'll notice that rope structure, you see this sort of rope bridge going between? That's intentional because when you have, every piece of equipment you have out there has to have a certain amount of space between it and another structure unless it's connected to a structure. So by having the areas connected, you're not bound to having as wide an area between the different structures. So there is a benefit in terms of space by connecting them, physically connecting the different structures.
Interesting.
Any questions? Very good. Now, for children that are, since you're making it handicap accessible, what would be some of the things here that'd be geared more to a child that has a handicap? You got them on the, you got them on the mat getting out there, but now that they're out there, what, what could they use?
Yes, I actually have a better 2D drawing this I can show you. When you come up to that path ends, that whole platform is ADA accessible, so they are able to get out of their wheelchairs at that point and, and go around the structure. We also have the fully accessible swing there. And another thing too that I, that I try to tell everybody, the ADA accessibility is not just for the children, it's for any adults that are in a wheelchair too, because if there's any issues on the, on the play structure with their children, they need to be able to access that structure too. So it's kind of for everybody.
One of the things we'd like to do also, if we overshoot our goal, is to be able to try and look, we've looked at some different pieces around, there are some different musical elements that you can add, some of the different things that are at ground level. There are some other pieces that we've looked, we've got a long wish list. So it's something where, this is a huge step forward for us in terms of the accessibility. It's not where we'd love it to be, but it's the most realistic way that we can comply and provide some of that accessibility and move in the right direction. And we're very grateful to the Arc of Greater Plymouth for donating $2,500 to this project to help, help with the accessibility features.
Very good.
In terms of warranty and longevity, what is, what does that look like? How long do you guarantee? And you mentioned something about the wood chip shifting. How often do you come out and?
Well, the wood chips, it depends on the use of the playground. The worst case scenario is, I have customers that usually top off their playground mulch maybe every three years. So I would come out and, and take a look. I usually come out twice a year just to check on that stuff. But, you know, a top off for this, probably be 45 yards of mulch for a top off. It probably costs between 1,200 and 1,500 maybe, every three years to top it off.
And what about when the, the wheelchair accessible, the rubber padding that you're providing, if those deteriorated?
That, that's, that's warranties for seven years. And it's like a roof. A roof is warranted for, you know, you get a 20 or 25-year roof. It's usually good for 27 years. Not only that, if you did run into any issues within, say, eight years, and it did have some pieces that were either vandalized or starting falling apart, we carry that stuff right at the shop in Marshfield. I told Pat that I would have no problem coming down and, and doing any patches if you needed it.
Okay. And then this structure here, I, I can see the kind of spider web looking thing. What is the, is that fabric on the inside?
It's rope. It's actually rope, yeah.
Okay, because we have something similar. We have a stretching web. I'm a personal trainer at the gym I work at. It's fraying from use.
Yeah.
Constant use. The rope is actually fraying off and it's a fairly new piece of equipment.
This is heavy duty marine rope. It's, I'm pretty sure the warranty on it's seven years. But yeah, it's heavy duty outside rope. It's probably better high quality than I want at the gym.
Very good. Dr. Sorenson?
I think a bit of an engineering question. Most swing sets, including the one that we have at Manamet Elementary School, are supported by a triangle. Is that supported just through concrete block?
Yes.
How high is that?
Eight feet. The top beam is eight feet. And we do the single pole. Each pole gets a lot more concrete than the, than the swings that you're used to, the upside down V. But no, each one of those poles gets about seven bags of concrete in each pole.
Very good. Any other questions? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a good plan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a request for a break because we have a very full agenda coming up. So let's take a, well, let's go to the half hour. Okay?
Okay.
Give you a little extra time.
It's great.
Okay, so we're back in session.
We are back in session.
And we have our update from the policy committee. And you want Dr. Campbell to tee it up or you want to dive right in? Dr. Sorenson?
I can start it. And then Dr. Campbell can support me. Dr. Campbell and I met, met last, last Wednesday night, and this looks more comprehensive than it really is, so we, it might not take us too long. Let me say that you've noticed in the policy that we have this discrimination, this not discrimination paragraph inserted in, in four or five of the policies. And that comes to us, we're going to be undergoing a coordinated program review. So we have our consultant on board now who's supporting us in preparation for that CPR that's going to occur next year. And the consultant is, is up to date with the Office of Civil Rights and is telling us that this paragraph is necessary everywhere. Is that correct, Dr. Campbell?
The nondiscriminatory statements should be updated. The recommendation was to, to look at ours, which wasn't inclusive as, as much as what you see in these particular policies that are presented before you. You can see, for example, in the nondiscrimination policy 2.6, you'll notice that there are a number of individual groups that were identified in the, in the new recommendations that weren't necessarily identified in the former statement. So including genetic information, answers to the status as a veteran or U.S. Uniform Military Service Provider. These are some examples of individual groups or organizations that weren't necessarily recognized in the previous statement. So.
Okay.
So if we'd like to take them one at a time, but I, there was a hand to the left.
I just have a question about 2.6. So where are you with the changes to 1.0? Should those same changes be made in 2.0 where it says, will apply to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability? Like it has almost everything in it, but not every piece of it. The 1.0 into 2.0.
It's policy. You want to take that?
I can just add, because I'm working closely with the CPR audit, Civil Rights. I don't think it's needed in both areas because it says the overall policy, the Plymouth School Committee's policy of nondiscrimination, so I think it's covered within that.
Okay.
According to the work we've done, and the big piece, and our attorney has reviewed it as well. So I think the big piece was that at the, the header of the nondiscrimination policy that we make sure we cover all the different facets of it.
Is there any harm in doing it?
I just didn't want to leave anybody out.
Would it cause confusion to sync the top and bottom?
It's completely up to you folks. I don't think it would cause any harm, but I.
Keeps it more consistent.
Be consistent, yes.
Certainly could get the language to reflect the same as it does in the new 1.0.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, the lists.
If that's.
So the lists are consistent.
Yeah.
So we'll make the lists consistent.
Yeah.
In 2.0.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Can we move on to the next one?
Are you going to do that or vote on them one at a time?
You want to vote them one, one at a time? It's probably easier for everybody. Yes, thank you.
I approve 2.6 with the, with the adjusted, recommend, recommended adjustments.
To 2.0.
Yes.
Second it?
I'm second.
Ooh, wow, that was a three-way tie.
I didn't.
I saw, I saw Mr. Morgan first, so we'll go, seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor?
Can we vote electronically? We gotta vote electronically?
Can we do it?
No, they're not set up. One at a time.
Yeah, and this was, this was an oversight. We typically do these individually and we cluster them and didn't, I didn't realize that until after it was posted, so we'll do it.
That's fine. So we have. So all those in favor?
All right, 2.7, as you can see, is the same inclusion of the same paragraph.
Yep. Ms. Badger?
I approve 2.7.
Second it? Second it? Ms. Hunt, second it? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to ask Mr. Costin to speak to 9.17 about the dollar amounts, but there's another, there's another sentence that got left off of this, this printout, so maybe he can address that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. First, with respect to the maximum balance limits, we're recommending as through, as part of our audit that we've just concluded for our middle, middle schools, and we've looked at our high schools also, that we need to increase the maximum balance limits to the recommended amounts that are noted here.
Okay.
That's number one.
If anyone has any questions about the limits?
Ms. Badger?
What was the limit?
85 for high schools and 50 for middle schools.
Okay, thank you.
What we're finding honestly is that while we're, things are costing more, we're doing more checks. What happens is that at, at certain points, we'll write checks, people won't cash them right away, and we'll get the money replenished, so we'll exceed the balance, even though we really haven't. But on paper, we've, the auditors have found that we've gone beyond that. So we need to, we need to give ourselves a little bit of a room in that.
Okay.
The, the second thing would be, and we recommended that this be put under the paragraph that starts with any travel, even though it's related to travel, but all general expenses.
Page two of three, third paragraph.
I'm sorry, yes, page two. I'm sorry, yes, page two. As part of our audit, what the auditors found and what concerns them, even though the expenses that were reimbursed to staff are legitimate, that we're reimbursing staff for expenditures on credit cards that are well in excess of a thousand dollars. The auditors are concerned that it's not a good practice to keep reimbursing for those amounts beyond that, primarily because most of us, I would say probably everyone, has rewards cards, where we get miles, or we get cash back, or we get something like that. So we've come up with some language. They felt that we should limit those reimbursements. They shouldn't be done only if necessary, but we should put a cap on those limits without obtaining prior approval from the business administrator. So our suggestion would be a sentence that simply says, "Expenses being reimbursed to a staff member must not exceed one thousand dollars without prior approval from the school business administrator."
And that would go at the end of this paragraph?
I would say that would be a new, short paragraph because it relates to travel, but it also relates to people going out to graduation time, buying things at local stores, et cetera.
Okay.
So it reads, "Expenses reimbursed to staff members must not exceed one thousand dollars?"
"Expenses being reimbursed to a staff member must not exceed one thousand dollars without prior approval from the school business administrator."
So if you're going to be attending a conference, it has to be approved by you first?
Well, these are student activity funds, so if you were buying balloons for South High School, two thousand dollars' worth of balloons for graduation.
So would this be a single item or consolidated expenses over time?
It would, through the audit, it would be a single procurement purchase.
So let's just say, let's say we, and we'll stick with graduation. So let's say for graduation, you need, it's well over a thousand dollars of expenses that we have, but let's say one person has a responsibility of gathering everything, everything that you possibly need for graduation. So it makes sense sometimes for that individual to use their card to get it quicker without having to go through the process and then getting reimbursed for it later. So what we're saying is it's much easier for us to comply with the law and to comply with other concerns we might have through policy if they work through Gary's office, and Gary can actually find a way to expedite that purchase, which is more in line with what we would want to see anyway.
Good. Motion? Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion, approve the policy as amended.
Mrs. Burgess, second it? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Now, the next one, 9.23, on the first page. Mr. Costin has recommended 2.4. You want to comment on that one, Mr. Costin?
Yes, again, as part of our recent audit, we have taken the recommendation of the auditors to, when a field trip is put forward, that they would like to see a financial breakdown even before, even before the field trip is approved for the principal. We have, we've established a, kind of made it a little bit clear what we're expecting. We've always had this form, but I think we've made it clear that we expect that the anticipated costs, the total costs, we want to see what their funding mechanism is, to make sure they have enough funds. And even though field trip money is collected ahead of time, and then it's, the trip isn't run until the money's collected, we also want to make sure that, you know, the cost is reasonable, et cetera. So that's just another form of review for us in the central office. So in saying that, the completed field trip form we're recommending includes a financial breakdown showing itemized expenses. So that's what the auditors would like to see.
Motion?
Mr. Begley?
I'm sorry.
The primary reason that this policy, the original reason that this policy came forward was because of the water safety.
Yeah.
And there's an inclusion on Section 7.8 as well with the YMCA.
So I was just going to address that.
This was the big one.
On 7.8, we added, as you see, Ellis Associates to that paragraph. And now Mr. Morgan had thought, and we discussed it, that perhaps we could add a generic phrase so that we wouldn't have to adjust the policy in the future should another water safety program come along, such as Ellis and Associates. And we sort of knocked that around for a minute, and, well, probably longer than a minute, and we decided not to do that because we thought water safety is too, obviously, too life and death. And so if another organization were to come along and was nationally recognized, the policy committee sitting at the time would have to readjust 7.8. But for now, we recommend just leaving it with the American Red Cross and Ellis Associates. So those are the two changes on this policy, Mr. Costin's change he spoke to, and 7.8.
Very good. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that.
That's okay. So I move that we accept this policy number, whatever.
And seconded by Ms. Badger? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you for working on that one. That was...
The next one is just a plain housekeeping item. This notice of nondiscrimination, what is this?
Yes, so policy 9.26 speaks to district policies pertaining to the conduct of students in accordance with Chapter 71, Section 37H. And it lists, essentially lists, all the policies, again, that relate to that. Policy 2.20, we can't even find, it was, it's prior to electronic school boards, so I didn't dig any further back, but this policy was eliminated before that. So it's, it was just an oversight that it's been sitting out there, and so we recommend to strike that from the table so that the policy reflects the most current policies.
Okay.
I'll move 9.26.
Okay, do I have a second? And Ms. Badger seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
9.29, another housekeeping item. We just readjusted the sequence where it says, "Note, all recommendations to streamline or drop the athletic program will come through the athletic, the director of athletics to the building principal, not the other way around." So we just readjusted the sequence. Is that correct?
Yes, and 1.112, we also had the nondiscriminatory statement added there as well.
You know what? I have my pages out of order. You're right. Thank you. Yeah, we ordered that paragraph added as well. Thank you.
And the viable schedule? And then you reverse that. Okay. Ms. Badger?
I just moved that we approved 9.29.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess?
It makes you go like this.
And if, any further discussion? All those in favor?
And now the change is to 9.29. In 2.2, you see the paragraph that's suggesting that the proponents make sure the district has the support staff, parentheses, maintenance, to accommodate the additional program. The policy committee felt that was not a task that should be assigned to proponents. Our administration would have to determine whether or not we have the support staff to support a new program. So that was the first recommended change.
Which one did we jump to?
9.29.
Oh, we just, we just did that. I'm sorry, Dr. Sorensen, we just did that, and you, we forgot to mention that when we just went over that, too. That was...
Okay, well, then I have my pages out of order, and I apologize for that.
That's okay. So there were three, there were three essential components to the policy that you just moved. The equal opportunity with the nondiscriminatory statement, the adjustments in terms of the viability or the release of those programs, the recommendations from the athletic director to the building principal, felt that that was the way that it should take place. And then there were...
In 2.0?
Within the guidelines for developing interscholastic athletic programs, the mentions of, excuse me, the sentence that reads, "They also need to make sure the district has a support staff maintenance to accommodate the additions of the programs," where specifically speaking to independently funded programs which no longer exist. So it was taking other things that are, it just, it's bringing it current.
So we all saw that, so we don't need to...
You saw that, so that's the part that Dr. Sorensen was speaking to.
So now we're on 9.3, the homeless education policy.
Again, the inclusion of the nondiscriminatory paragraph at the end is the only change being recommended.
I just have one really quick thing where it says, "Nondiscrimination of services programs." It says ANS, it just needs to say A and B.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good catch. Fix that?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes. Ms. Badger seconded.
And finally, in 9.34, we now will be using audio as well as video recordings on the school buses. So we had to include audio in paragraph three, and we just did some housekeeping item changes in the last paragraph.
This would essentially be a new policy that doesn't exist. As you know, we have substantial video surveillance, and we're really happy with the direction that our buses, in order to monitor safely the comings and goings of the buses, but the, excuse me, my computer just did something very interesting. I have no idea where it all went. I'll take care of that later. Thank you. So a recommendation through our offices to have a separate policy that explicitly states that we use audio and video surveillance on our school buses, and the purpose for that, and you can see in terms of that process. Another recommendation, Dr. Sorensen and I spoke about including this in the student handbook in its entirety. When we have something that is, I think, as important and succinct as this, it's easy enough for us to put that in the handbook. So our recommendation would be, when you have the presentation for handbook in June, to include this language in there as well.
Very good, so. You guys are fast on the trigger tonight. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mistress Ellie? Unanimous. And that's that one. And now we have the Old Colony YMCA. Say that again?
This particular item is a repeat agenda item from the previous school committee meeting, and there was some level of discussion regarding how does our policy actually fit with the Ellis training that is done for the lifeguards at the YMCA. So the desire of the committee was to have the policy revised. We just heard the policy was revised, so this item is back on the agenda for action based on the policy revision that was done earlier this evening.
So you're wanting us to approve the change?
Well, no, right now, I was going to make a motion to approve and adopt the Water Safety Day as outlined in the previous meeting.
Okay, so move, second it? Wait a second. Oh, this one we have. Okay. So any further discussion?
I just wanted to mention that I've heard a lot of chatter about it, and it's all been positive. Everybody, teachers, parents, everybody's been really, the little bits I've heard about it, everybody's really excited about it.
I witnessed it at the YUP in Hanover. I walked over to Aquatics, and they had, it was in progress. It was excellent, very thorough.
Very good.
Very good.
Just a question on that. Was it students that were coming in from the schools? Wow. Very good.
Very thorough. The Y is great.
So we have moved, seconded it, and if we could just all vote?
It's electronic. Success.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for doing that on such short notice.
I just want to take an opportunity to thank Dr. Campbell and Dr. Sorensen for their work on this. I'm part of the policy committee, but this meeting was put together really quick, and my wife was out of town, so I couldn't attend the meeting, so I appreciate them doing that work without me and also taking my input on the water safety policy. So thanks, guys.
We've had a lot of good policy meetings together, the three of us. Appreciate it.
Very good. So at this point, we have a public hearing scheduled on the school choice program, so we want to open it up for the public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the school committee? Yes? No? Seeing nobody, then I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Dr. Miestis.
Yes, every year at this time, we present this agenda item to take action regarding school choice programs. As many of you are aware, regarding Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, allows school districts to take action to allow students to enroll in a, another school district that is in Massachusetts. For example, if a student from an outside school district wanted to enroll and attend the Plymouth Public Schools, they could through school choice, and that school district would have to pay a dollar amount, which is much less than the amount that we receive for per pupil in the district. So there is a state dollar amount that is set for school choice. The sending school district would have to then pay that tuition to the receiving school district. This provision is active in some districts across the Commonwealth. It's very popular on the Cape, but the Plymouth Public Schools has entertained this school choice option at public hearing for many, many years and has always voted against the option. And the, this is an option that we have never exercised because of space concerns that we may have in our schools. And one of the issues along with school choice is if you designate students, let's say we were to open up school choice in the seventh grade, students would continue through their education cycle from seventh grade to graduation. Or if you open it up at ninth grade, there would be ninth grade to graduation. So again, we're, we have not voted for this in years past. And with that said, Mr. Begley, I'll turn it back to you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do not do school choice.
And seconded by Ms. Hunt? Any further discussion on this? Then let's take a vote on it. A shame, because our attendance has dropped in certain areas. Where in years past, we were just filled, we had people in closets, for crying out loud, we were so overcrowded. But now we have room, but that clause where as soon as they're in, they have, you have to handle them through even the grades where you still have crowding issues.
Yes, so it makes it really difficult. And the other thing, too, that I think the state may need to consider adjusting with school choice, is it's not a true dollar-for-dollar per pupil expenditure from the sending to the receiving. So I think that, you know, I think it does bring money in, but again, it's not at the same rate as to what the per pupil is, so...
Right, but it assumes you have an empty seat, so, and you're filling it, so it's better than nothing, right?
Absolutely.
But the problem is, then the next grade, you didn't have an empty seat.
Absolutely.
Yes.
In the past, too, didn't we, because of the VOTE Tech program, that a number of our children wouldn't be, wouldn't, we can't fill all the seats for our own, so therefore it's, it would become a...
And Ms. Burgess, that, again, since we have two high schools... And Ms. Burgess, that, that, again, since we have two high schools, and we have a bunch of, I mean, it depends on the region of town that you decide to offer school choice, you could have selective regionalization of what school you would allow to be in that, in that school choice option. But you're absolutely right, if we did open it up, South High School, that would limit the amount of students that we could actually enroll from Plymouth into those program, those programs. One of the other issues that is becoming an issue with school choice is, is it increases the availability of athletic options for kids, because we bring kids from out of districts, and kids that would normally play that might get cut because a kid from a school choice situation actually bumped them off the team, and I've seen that happen to other school districts where the, the community likes the idea, but after it comes into play, it becomes very contentious, because I've actually seen that happen with class rank and valedictorian, you might have a valedictorian that might be
But if we were to accept the program, which we didn't, but if we were, then in theory, that child is ours to educate, so I don't see a difference. Once as, once as a committee you take that step, then you take everything that goes along with it.
And that's, that's absolutely right, but once, I think those, those decisions are educated decisions, I think when, they end up becoming personal to, to family members, you know, and I've, I've heard it on both sides of the
Yeah.
You know, I've, I've seen it throughout the Commonwealth when that happens.
How many, just out of curiosity, how many school districts do it?
I would say, I don't know, Mr. Carson might have a better idea, I would say maybe the Cape, I would say more than I would say Yeah, I think down the Cape it's about a hundred percent, because they're taking from each other, but I think, it's not that common in the rest of the state. But that's an interesting data point, and you got me intrigued with that, so I'm going to try to find out.
Yeah, be interesting, because they would have the same issues, obviously, so.
Yeah, I know Old Rochester has it, Wareham has it, the Cape has it, it's, yeah. Again, it's school districts that are, that are starving for population, and that's why they do it, to try to gain more population, so it's
Right.
Yeah.
And from the reverse side, if you have a district that you know is lacking in certain programming, you want to, you know, talk to the other town and say, hey, you know
That's right.
Town, you know, you might have a bordering town that, a district that offers something that you don't offer, and you know you're not going to be offering it anytime soon, you'd like to see if, you know, you could work something out, but. Okay. That was unanimous, that vote.
Yeah, that was
Now we have the annual evaluation plan. And I'm going to try to do this on my, oops, I was wrong. I can't promise that I can read this very well, but
I can read it for you.
I'm certainly going to try.
You could add lib a little.
Is it me or are lights brighter tonight?
They're really bright.
Are they really bright tonight?
It's the way it's
Oh, you were able to put it up there? Thank you.
Do we have a copy of the compendium, or you go, the one who has it?
Mrs. Dargy has it.
Send it to us, so we can read along with him?
Yeah. That was one of the reasons I was late, I was trying to incorporate some late breaking news. And I wound up whacking out this, this word document is one of the most sensitive word documents I think I've ever played with, it threw off the tables and
Go to email.
I know, I couldn't open mine either, yeah, I had to send you permission.
We had to send you permission in order to open it on Google.
No, it's actually, a few weeks, like, two weeks ago, you got it in first.
Yeah.
And I was able to open it on my phone.
And you couldn't open it.
But then when I tried to open it to follow up I had to get
I was like, oh, okay.
Don't use Google Docs.
I don't have Word.
It's the only way we could save it, I could save it.
The PDF was easy to work.
I don't have Word, I don't have Word.
I have a MacBook though, so I have pages, so I had to convert it to PDF and it went into Google Docs.
Yeah, mine automatically did Google Docs.
We can't vote on it.
And that was hanging on.
Yeah.
Okay, so there were multiple formats, and we got over the, over the hump there on that one, and, and we have that, so. I'm just going to go through it all, I know it's long, so I'm going to jump around a little bit, but. So, the state requires us to do this evaluation of the superintendent's performance, and it needs to be done in a public session, it can't be done in a executive session, so I want to make sure that, like I say this every year, I want to make sure that we take enough, we don't rush through this, and we, and we get the, what? So
Geez, I thought the idea didn't work.
Well, I heard you saying something, but I couldn't hear what it was, but. All right, you threw me there, okay, so, step one was the professional practice goals. Summarizing all of our input, I have, everything was met and exceeded. So the student learning goals met, the district improvement goals exceeded, I mean, we're going to talk about it in more detail, but we have our second high school about to open, and it's a work of art, so, and there was so much logistics that had to be accomplished to make this day finally arrive, so there's, there's no way that could not be exceeded in, in my estimation. This doesn't look right.
You don't have anything filled out.
Oh, boy.
I just pulled up Nancy, that she just emailed, we just got it.
So I apologize, this form is all messed up.
Yeah, you can't put it on the iPad, I tried, won't let me.
I'm Nancy, she just sent it just now.
Sorry about that. Don't be nervous, Gary, it's all really, really good.
That's an indication, anyway.
It's actually, I think, every year, Dr. Miestis's numbers are, thank you.
That's way better.
Okay, start my heart again. Instructional, so on the step two, instructional leadership proficient, under standard one, standard two, which would be management and operations exemplary, standard three, which is family and community engagement exemplary, professional culture proficient, and the document goes on to support the details behind all of that. I'll get back to the final comment later, just keep scrolling down, keep going down. We'll go to the first goal first, who's got control of the?
Keep going, yeah.
Yeah, just go down to the first goal, really. So it's broken down, the first goal was met, as, as we already discussed, and this was, the Plymouth Public Schools has been selected to undergo the Mass DESE, Comprehensive District Accountability Review. As you know, we all went through that review, our district was very well prepared for it, interviews that we were all on, the interview, the interviewers, all stated that the information they would provide, it was thorough and complete, now we're just waiting to hear back the official results, so we're, I think if we had the official results, obviously, we would have made that exceed it. And then number two was about the Plymouth Public Schools theme for the sixteen seventeen school year is the concept of resilience, determination, and grit, that is met as well, based on the measurements and the feedback we've heard. The third one was the community of Plymouth, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the nation are in the midst of a drug abuse and addiction epidemic. Although the school department has not seen an influx of drug-dependent students, the awareness of healthy living to promote lifelong wellness is the leading conversation as I travel throughout, and it goes on. Just, we know that Dr. Miestis works very hard on the PYDC and other committees, as he mentions here, and he also, tonight, as we were talking about, our concerns about extending the health program, and we've had conversations about that at our retreat and everything as well, so there's a lot more detail that supports that this was, was also met. And then the fourth goal was, the communication is a significant component of parent and community engagement, as the district has embraced social media and the use of multimedia resources to convey district news and essential information, this goal will focus on transforming our district communications model. As we all know, this is where Dr. Miestis consistently hits it out of the park, year after year, and the important thing, I think it was, I shouldn't identify individual comments, but one of you has made an individual comment about how his philosophy, Dr. Miestis's philosophy of don't rest on your accomplishments, constantly keep pushing and pushing and pushing to improve and make it better and better, and communications is a beautiful example, where the improvement to the Voyager, the improvement to our social media, having Emily and others on staff and working so hard to come up with the documents she prepared, the statistics she gives to us all the time, just, that one you exceed it, because that was. And five, as the district continues to address the school facilities needs at the high school level, I will remain committed to leading the process to complete the construction of the new Plymouth South High School, which, as we all know, we're all going, going to be accepting ownership of the building soon, and it is a beautiful structure, a long time in coming, and that also is exceeded. Then the state asks for superintendent performance ratings for various standards. Standard one is instructional leadership, so again, a summarized collection from input from all of us, for curriculum, proficient for instruction, exemplary, assessment proficient, evaluation proficient, data-informed decision-making exemplary. And some folks did an excellent job of providing feedback, and with minor changes, I won't say who, they'll recognize this, Dr. Miestis and his administrative team are exemplary in their leadership of the district and the opportunities that they provide their staff. This is well illustrated by the many offerings that they have given to their staff for professional development during in-service days, along with the training that is conducted as needed for individual teachers and groups of teachers. The district has made it a priority to allow teachers to observe their peers, to learn new techniques and ways to present the material that might be more effective. The district has also invented, invested in curriculum coordinators and math and reading coaches that can help teachers with lesson plans that engage and help students learn at all levels. The grade, the grade-level learning communities and other practices like it help the teachers to identify students who are struggling to get help from other teachers, to determine best ways to help the students that are struggling. Having Dr. Miestis selected by the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, to be part of the news conference highlighting the good that the evaluation process is doing for the education system shows that under his leadership, the district is effectively using the evaluations correctly. Finding flaws in a system and evaluating them to determine the best way to help students learn is a hallmark of Dr. Miestis's work. Moving to full day K, this year and next year, moving the fifth graders back to Plymouth South Elementary School helped to create a system that looks out for the best interest of the district and every student's success. The creation each year of the district theme has engaged the schools and focused teachers to not only focus on the important academics to cover, but also the development of the whole child. His leadership is evident in the successful implementation of this across the district, from the students to the teachers. Dr. Miestis's philosophy and belief that we must never rest on our accomplishments is very evident in his willingness to listen, listen, and his ability to meet with and, when appropriate, support each and every stakeholder within our educational community. Number two, standard number two is management and operations, and it's broken down into five major areas. The first, environment exemplary, human resources management and development proficient, scheduling and management information systems proficient, law, ethics and policies exemplary, fiscal systems exemplary. Listening to the concerns of teachers, parents, and other stakeholders is one of Dr. Miestis's great qualities. This year, when determining the next steps for the district's safety procedures, he heard from some staff who wanted to move to the Alice procedure, and other people wanted to make sure that the district did not go to the extreme of Alice. Through lots of revision, the district procedures for next year are a good mix of both with options depending on the comfort level of the teacher or staff member. A more streamlined hiring procedure developed this year, and the continued emphasis on continuing education helps to elevate the district and those within. Dr. Miestis has continually recruited and hired the best individuals. One only needs to see the extensive list of state and national awards and accomplishments of our students to know that our administrators are very good at what they do. The next one is, number three, is family and community engagement. And for engagement is the first part exemplary, sharing responsibility exemplary, communication exemplary, family concerns exemplary. This is where Dr. Miestis excels. He communicates well with students, parents, and town government officials alike, he continues to make family and community engagement a priority. His communication plan has greatly increased information to stakeholders. By hiring a communication specialist, he has increased engagement, having a parent summit was groundbreaking in proving that family engagement is a top priority. Communication via social media is getting better, and Dr. Miestis has made it a priority to meet people where they are in order to communicate. Voyager continues to impress, engage, and inform the community and those interested in the district. Standard four is professional culture. That's broken down into four and, no, I'm sorry, into six. Commitment to high standards proficient, cultural proficiency proficient, communication exemplary, continuous learning proficient, shared vision proficient, and managing conflict exemplary. With the expenditure of budget on curriculum coordinators and making, and making that a priority to make sure that all teachers have the resources and information they need to be successful, Dr. Miestis is also very flexible and committed to the district in communicating the good work of the district through panels. The Dream Ride, which he completed last year, is something that cannot be overlooked, that event showed his commitment to the district and the strong communication skills he has and his focus on improving the student experience. And now, if we go all the way back up to the top, I'll just read the few closing sentences. Another school year has come by, come and, has gone by, and Dr. Miestis has once again delivered on all the goals and commitments this committee had laid out for him. Marked by a robust curriculum, extensive professional development opportunities, and excellent facilities management, Dr. Miestis has placed the district on a clear path to excellence. Upon review of his many accomplishments detailed throughout this document, the committee has provided Dr. Miestis with high grades across the board. And that, that concludes it, I just want to say that it is a pleasure, as always, to write these and to consolidate everybody's opinions. It's easy when we are blessed with the staff that we have, and you make it easy to write them. But everything in here, we, we probably could have been even more glowing if we could. It's excellent job, excellent year, and we look forward to next year.
Thank you, I appreciate the time that you put into this, I know it takes a lot of time to think about what we can do in our district to actually get better, and what is a priority, and I know as the years go forward, we will continue to work at some of these goals that are a concern for all of us, I think the health and wellness of our children will always be I think the health and wellness of our children will always be a goal, and it's going to be, it's going to take a lot of effort from a lot of us to actually try to put a dent in what we have concerns about regarding our students and families. I had a visitor from one of our administrators to my office last week, and the first thing he said to me is, I was just meeting with some other administrators and teachers in the district, and he said that, that I was a very lucky, lucky man because I had such a great team. And I think it's very clear that I have a very capable and sought-after administrative team that helped to put this district in better shape every day that we worked together. So, you know, I've worked with Chris for nine years, Gary for nine years, I've worked with Patty for 11 years, and not quite a year in this role, but I can tell you that we are committed. It feels like forever. We are committed together to be able to continue to make this district what it, what it can be. And I tell our administrators, even my first day as superintendent, my first administrative meeting, we're, we're a good school district, but we need to find out how we can become a great school district. And that's what we're going to continue to do. And I know that everyone around me supports me, and I think a lot of what you cited tonight is evidence to the work that we have all been able to accomplish as a effective team. So thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
And just one last follow-up. My A-plus financial administrator in the end gave some data regarding school choice.
That was quick, thank you.
So we have 323 school districts in Massachusetts. We have, I was wrong on my, on my assumption, we have 143 school districts that do not participate, and 180 that do participate in school choice. So Plymouth is one of the 180 that do not. Excuse me, I had that, I had that wrong. 143 do not participate.
Yeah.
And 180 do participate.
A little more than a third participate.
Yeah. All right. And that's, of course, of the 323 district and regional school districts in Massachusetts.
Yeah, that's the, so it doesn't line up exactly with the town count.
Can I follow, can I, can I follow your last comment?
Oh, sure.
The comment about the evaluation.
Dr. Sorenson, yes, please.
Now, I've lost count, but I think I've worked with six superintendent administrations in this district in the 30 years that I've been involved in this, and I have to tell you, I have the most confidence in your team.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if anyone wanted to make comments or add to anything. So now let's beat them up on the next issue. Bring them back down.
Bring them back down.
Well said, well said.
Okay, what do we have next? Now we have...
Fundraisers, oh yeah. That's for sure.
Fundraising activities. Does anybody have anything?
I know.
We continue to send out our friendly reminders to get the gross and net receipts in, so just sent one out today, in fact, so.
So maybe we need to stop being so friendly.
You know, we're trying to be very mindful of how enormously busy people are, but also don't want them to lose sight of that we need this information.
It's important, yeah.
It's important to...
It's important to keep the public trust, and I think we need to have...
Yes.
Because people see these fundraisers happening all the time, and they want to make sure the money's going to the right places and whether they're successful. Now we have our reports. Reports and proposals from the committee members. Does anybody have anything they'd like? Yeah, oh, good. Ms. Badger first.
Okay. I just wanted, I went to the senior showcase, I know a couple other members did, at North, and it was just so impressive to see the different things that they're coming up with. I mean, it ran the gamut. It was just very impressive. It was nice to see that a lot of them actually would, like, engage you without having for you to first engage them. And also, I talked to a couple kids who said, you know, they were really shy before the project, but it really showed them that there's no point in being shy, that, you know, they, they're passionate about something, just go with it, and nobody, you know, nobody cares. I thought that was, was great. At 18, what, 17, 18, 19, to figure that one out is big. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that the raffle tickets are $20 apiece for the prime seating at North and South High School. We're going to draw them on May 25th, and all the money goes directly to student scholarships at both North and South. And, what am I forgetting? You can go to PlymouthAlumni.net and purchase them today, right now even. That's it.
And Ms. Hunt?
Just a few things. It's getting to be the busy season. I had the opportunity of attending the Health and Wellness Committee meeting, which I was fortunate enough to actually make it into my schedule this month. And it was good, a lot of discussions around concussion and some workshops on concussion, so that will hopefully be coming soon. I attended the Empty Bowls event, which was amazing, and I, I wasn't able to make it last year, but I went the year before. I actually made a bowl. I was looking for my bowl, but I never found it, so somebody out there has my bowl that I made. And, you know, I, I saw a great increase in the amount of people that were there from two years ago, and as always, it was wonderful to have the a cappella groups there, but I know these guys were there, too.
I think in terms of, talk about a great community fundraiser for the South Shore Community Action Council, I think they raised over $3,500 for the South Shore Community Action Council, which is about $1,000 more than last time.
Yeah, it was a great, it was a great event. And then I wanted to let everybody know, the Indivisible Plymouth meeting that I mentioned last meeting, and Mr. Brady was, is part of that group. Their next meeting is May 21st, which is this Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the library. And the last thing is, there are a few events coming up to benefit the students that are going to Shishikahama, and I just wanted to mention them really quickly. I know that we talked about the fundraiser that they had that was really successful. It's an expensive trip for these students, and this is a way that they can kind of help to offset their cost. And what it is, is any of the students that actually participate in the fundraiser, they're going to split that amount between the kids that are going. So this Wednesday, which is a half a day of school, from 1:00 to 8:00, the Sky Zone is going to be donating part of the profits to this group. So they're going to be getting a certain percentage of students that sign up to go to Sky Zone and, and bring a certificate or a coupon. I know Nancy shared them, has them electronically, so if anybody's interested as well. And I think they're going to put some people outside passing out coupons, so that way anybody that comes in can help contribute. Also, right after that or during that, Pizzeria Regina has offered to donate 20% back to this group for anybody that goes afterwards and gets pizza for dinner. So I know I can't go to the Sky Zone, but I'll make sure that we have pizza for dinner that night. And then May 24th, Bertucci's is actually agreeing to give a percentage back to the group. So that's going to happen. And then June 6th, the 99 Restaurant is going to be giving some money back to the group. So even if you're not able to make it to these groups and you're in these restaurants, if you could just thank them for helping us out, that would be great.
Is there anything they have to do? Do they have to say when they're being waited on?
There's, yeah, and there's going to be coupons distributed. Right now, the group that, the Facebook group that has it, I don't know if, if we can share it on, because it's a certain group, we can't probably share it on the school group. But they are going to try and have some students at the door or at these events handing out coupons.
That's a good idea.
What was the one on 99? What was the date on that?
The 99 is on the, June 6th.
Okay.
It was Bertucci's? And Bertucci's is May 24th. And then this coming Wednesday is Sky Zone and Pizzeria Regina. So this is just going to go, it's going to go directly to help the kids to offset the cost of the tickets, the plane tickets. So in this, I think this is the, the group that's done the most fundraising, and it's really good. They didn't get quite as much, you know, in the past, there have been other groups, like the Distinguished Visiting Committee has, don't, kicked in some money towards the tickets, and it's not happening this year, so it's really good. And they are, I think, planning a car wash in June as well. I don't think we have a date for it yet, but they are meeting this week, so maybe something will come out of it. But that's it.
Yeah, very, very involved.
Yeah, and the parents are stepping up big time.
The parents have, have really, have really been very busy, and there's some organizers within the group that just, I, I want to keep their names because they make things happen.
Yeah, hold on to them for a while.
Yeah.
They're doing a good job.
Very much so.
Very good.
Yeah. And, yeah, just reiteration, I also went to the Plymouth-North High Senior Showcase, and it was very good. I did like it. I mean, one of the boys even came out and said, you know, I came up and I started to look, and he says, "Would you like me to tell you about my project?" And so, it was, they were very, very, very good, very forward about it. It was, I thought it was a wonderful night. Tonight, unfortunately, was at South, I mean, tomorrow night, we can't go. And Empty Bowls, I always go to Empty Bowls, and that, that is growing, and it is great. And so, the music is good, the, I think the people are in a general good mood, but there was more bidding around the, the silent auction items, and people were upping each other much more than before. It was, it was very, very aggressive.
Getting excited about it.
Yeah, they got, but they did, they really, it was really, yeah, it's building, it's, it's very good.
Very good. Ms. Badger?
I forgot two things. Really, just one. So I had a conversation, and I should have brought this up in new business, and I forgot. I wrote my note in the wrong part of electronic school boards, that I apologize. But I had a, a meeting with a mother who's involved in the special education pack, and she's looking to have, and I'm going to meet with Stacy, hopefully, later this week, have a phone call. But one of the things that she thought might be able to help us is that, it might be able to help them and us, is if we had a member from the school committee member, a school committee member assigned to SPEDPAC. We don't always have to go to CPAC, we don't always have to, you know, attend, it's kind of like being on a school council. She just thought that might be a, a nice way to bridge, bridge the communication, so if they have a concern or something, they have somebody to talk to. But I just thought I would bring it up here as a, something to talk about it and...
Yeah. I don't know. My take on that would be, we have so many committees, and it's hard for people to juggle all the committees we have now. It's easier for them to come to us. Like, when she was at the retreat, we extend it, an invitation, you know, come, you know, we have public comment every meeting, you know, if, if there's an issue. And I know that Dr. Maestis' office is always open and accommodating, but to have another committee to attend...
It was just a thought, I didn't know if it made a difference or not.
Get difficult. We have one that, no, we wouldn't have it coming off, we're still always going to have the alternative high school, even though we now have the charter, and we're still going to have kids that could stay, so, because we have a liaison to that, I was going to say, that, that could be a swap. Unless we want to double up on that one, make it like...
Whoever does one thing does the other, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like group them together, because they probably need very young people.
I think that...
Well, they're not the same.
And I would think, I think with that, this, is just to know that they have a committee member, or they know that they, from the discussion that I had with this parent, just to know that she has someone that she can talk to, or that they have someone that they can talk to as a point person rather than a big scary committee, and that's her words.
Sometimes it's a committee where the situation, parents are advocating for their kids, so...
Yeah, it is situational.
Right. The circumstances are, they would feel comfortable maybe having someone they know directly. Yeah. To speak to.
But yet, we really only refer them. So, we really can't, if they have something, some need that they have, we really can't as a responder answer to it, all we can do is refer them.
But I mean, we don't, with the school councils, or, I'm just bringing it up because I think a lot of what she was explaining sounds a lot like what we do on the school councils. It's, we don't necessarily get involved and answer a question immediately, or we come when they want us to come. And I don't necessarily think that it's something that we would need to go to every time. And when I talked to her, when we were fleshing out kind of her thoughts and her ideas, she said maybe once every couple months, not every meeting, but just being able to know that we might come to a meeting or two or something like, that they have throughout the year. So, just a thought.
Yeah. I, I would just be hesitant of that, because then you'll have other organizations that are going to look for that same level of support. It could spiral out of control. For example, boosters and stuff, they may say, hey, we would be much better hooked in if one of you guys came to all our meetings.
I get that.
And then it just would keep going. Because we do have a lot of subcommittees to support. Why don't we see, why don't we see, tell them to reach out to us and see how it works? I mean, if they feel that, you know, they're not getting the attention level that they need.
Okay.
See how it works.
Okay, I'll tell you.
And then come back, you know, then revisit it in the future. PYDC?
PYDC, I went. But I left my notes sitting right on the table, ready to go. You can put it out to the next meeting, or I can say a few things, and I can let my friends over here fill in.
Were you guys at the meeting, too?
We can all contribute.
What they could do.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Because, I had such a good, this time, I took such good notes, and then I leave them on the counter, that's great. But anyway...
Who wants to give us a...
Do you want to start, Marjorie? We can...
Either way.
She doesn't have any notes, why don't you?
Yeah, the only thing I really have a note on that comes right in my mind is the sticker shock thing.
Yep.
And also what they're doing with the, with the liquor, with these liquor stores, and that all but two in town have agreed to take, be a part of this program and have a, have a sticker in their, in their business. And, and the lead one seems to be Piopis, where they're having the kickoff.
That's right, that's Thursday. Thursday at Piopis at 5:00 p.m.
This Thursday.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's, if anybody wants to go to that, that's very, very good that, that so many have participated, and it really will help our kids.
So we can, Chris and I can double team on this, we were both there. The sticker shock campaign is a campaign that's designed to get support from the local establishments that sell alcohol, and it's a sticker that goes on the refrigerator door at a establishment, and it urges the purchasing people coming into, to the store to really take into consideration that buying for a minor is against the law, and it identifies the penalties associated. So it's a campaign that...
I didn't have a sticker there already.
Yeah. It, and I think there's, there's a, a level of competition for that space, for, for, for sales and advertising, and so it's, it's, it's premium space. So Amy LaFort from Sapsy has been very instrumental in arranging agreements, a volunteer group of people have gone out through the community, getting agreements to be able to put the stickers on the doors. And all but two establishments in the community have agreed for about, till July 5th, to actually have the stickers posted. So it's, it's a great effort, and it's part of our work at PYDC to try to, you know, bring awareness to, to what's happening with sales and things of that nature. So that was one item that was discussed.
And the, well, then the, on the sticker shock thing still, they are, they're really designed by the kids in our school, the marketing kids, so they're really, they're involved with it. And, and the ideas and things that, that come up are all their ideas, and they think that, you know, it should work better in the community than, and with us, so...
Marjorie doesn't need notes.
No.
I think the, the other thing, too, that was discussed is the website. There's a new redone website that has a variety of resources...
That's good.
...that the community can have available, and, and they're resource for parents, stakeholders of the community, if they're faced with a question regarding their student, their child, dealing with an issue that they might want to get some direction around alcohol or drugs, there's a variety of partners that we have worked with. Their contact information is on there, all the resource information is, is on the website. So the website is, Dr. Camel, can you read that?
It's PYDCplumith.org. So it's a completely new website, new URL, and it will show you all the work that's taken place through that collaboration, that specifically the sticker shock Mrs. Burgess referenced, which will be up, by the way, until July 1, no, excuse me, July 5th. They want to take it through the 4th of July, because this time is sort of the most prevalent time where underage drinking and, and parties and situations can occur. The reason why they don't keep the, keep it up the entire year is they see that it becomes, one, it becomes difficult for the, because... The reason why they don't keep the, keep it up the entire year is they see that it becomes, um, one, it becomes difficult for the, um, because product placement is important to the, the companies. But also changing it up and, and doing something different, um, from time to time in these establishments is important. So, um, the website, again, PYDC Plymouth.org, it is connected to our website, so you'll see where the old website was, the new website is up. The sticker shock campaign, social norming campaign, uh, which we've talked about before, and marketing, the photo voice projects which you've probably seen in the past, which we've done with our, uh, visual arts department. Where students, um, express visually their sort of, um, personal trials, tribulations and experiences with, um, either a loved one or, or, um, personal use with substance. Um, which has been on display at various social events, tells a story. Um, hidden in plain sight, which we've done in the district, district a number of times for families, um, as well as, um, all of, just, there's so many things. So, the website, I encourage you to, when you have time to, to look at that, it's pretty comprehensive, the behavioral health component that we've added as a subcommittee of PYDC and Project Outreach with the police.
And then they're working on, um, on, on some kind of a campaign to get it going, to try to get it to the kids that 70% don't drink?
Yeah, that's the, the social norming campaign, so, um, when you think about, people think it's the norm, that everyone is doing it all the time. Well, in fact, it's not entirely true. When you look at, sure, students do experiment, um, we do see that, you see that in the C T C surveys. But, in reality, the, sort of the regular usage isn't as high as some people may think it is. So, trying to get at students with, and adults on statistics that actually highlight that in a positive way. Like, don't be, be a part of the majority, but the majority aren't doing it on a frequent basis. It was done with, um, smoking campaign years ago, so approaching it that way. So, that's something that we're doing with our marketing department students as well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay.
That's it. Building committee.
But that was very good, we, I, yeah, cause it's all, the building committee, um, of course, the same thing, I left him at home, but I, you came just a little bit. No, he will, but I just wanna begin, cause with South High School. Yeah, it'd be, isn't that, or is it the Newtown Hall that was first? Oh, okay.
Wait, if he's, if he's doing it, let him do it.
But he wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't there?
I was there.
Oh, you were there.
Enough of the Newtown Hall piece.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, the new, the Newtown Hall, um, they've run, they've, it's behind schedule. And it won't be, um, done on time as they thought. The, uh, the, the construction company, uh, is about, uh, two and a half, three weeks behind. But, uh, they still, um, they've ordered, they had, they thought that he was going to be, so they ordered things so that it would come later. That's a good thing.
Right.
It's not the case with Plymouth South, but with Plymouth, with that one, yes. And so, they will be opening a little bit later and, uh, cause they haven't got it all settled either about the parking garage, because the prices came in on the bids way, way more than they thought, yeah.
On Plymouth South High School, the story is the same, the O P M is telling us that it, it's not unusual for a project of this scope to get to the, uh, you know, the end of the contract period and find that we're behind. And we are behind, I mean, uh, uh, the, and I think Dr. Maestas can speak to some of the issues here. The, uh, the F F N E started the day before yesterday and it's my understanding that that equipment and stuff is beginning to be moved back into the, into the building. But the contractors are not finished and many of the contractors are not finished.
Subcontractors.
Subcontractors. And they are hiring extra people to get it done. So, it's sort of that end of the, end of the season rush that we're being told happens in, in projects of this scope.
So, the biggest issue that we have going on is the tile on the floor is, um, going down. And, and initially the, it was not meeting a timeline that we had projected. And when the tile doesn't go down in a timely manner, then it, then it stalls the other subs that have to actually place tile after that. So, uh, it is making progress, uh, we're probably two to three weeks behind schedule. And, um, but that's not gonna hold the contractor and the other subcontractors from moving furniture and new furniture that needs to be installed. Keep in mind, it has to be, um, a lot of this furniture has to be built. So, they're staging in the cafeteria, uh, to be able to do that. But, it, they, they've really moved along, uh, you know, nicely, with the exception of trying to get this tile down, which is, again, holding back some other pieces. But as Dr. Sorenson said, the project of this scope to be two, three weeks off is not really a bad situation.
Outside of the building, probably the, uh, the, the area that's most concerning is the site work because, you know, this is, the, the growing season is upon us and the planting season is upon us. And of course, you, you have to get the, uh, site work done before you can do final paving. So, the final paving now is scheduled for, uh, middle of July. So, site work until middle of July and then final paving, and final paving after that.
But you're still going forward, we're still going forward.
The building, the elevator will be inspected very soon. And the feeling is that all the inspections, even though we're behind in certain things, the feeling is all the inspections will take place and, uh, the certificate of occupancy will be, will be, you know, released. That's the Ha, Plymouth South. Uh, Syme's House, uh, I'm sorry.
Just one thing to follow up, and I know Dr. Sorenson, you weren't at the meeting, I don't think, yet. I just wanna give a calendar item that I didn't repeat, I didn't mention earlier, but the ribbon cutting.
Yes.
For Plymouth South High School will be September 14th. So, please mark your calendars, that is a very important night that you should all enjoy. Okay, so that's September 14th.
And Dr. Maestas, you were also reported at the building committee meeting of, that we've identified the, uh, the tours that are gonna, the Saturday dates for the tours.
Yes, we do have a variety of tours that are going to be, um, we're gonna actually give tours to the community. Um, so we can get, um, all the stakeholders in, we'll have, uh, those tours will begin on, um, we'll do a soft tour on Monday, August 7th. We'll do, uh, local officials tour on the 11th. And that will be 11th of, of August and it'll be from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. And then we'll, we'll do public tours on Saturday, um, and that'll be, um, the 12th of August. Keep in mind that we'll, we'll have student ambassadors that will learn the building exceptionally well, uh, prior to visitors come. Uh, and they will be guiding our visitors through the building, highlighting the design features of the building and, uh, architect, architectural features of, of, uh, the staircase and why it was a certain way. And so, um, Dan Riley will be working with our students to train them. So, we'll have troops of kids taking visitors by groups of 10 or 15 when they come in, we'll just have them going every 15, 20 minutes, so we can get people through the building. And, and again, our local officials are, you know, town meeting members, boards, they'll all get invitations.
Yeah.
Um, the general community won't get, you know, they'll get an open invitation that will advertise through our social media and through the Old Colony Memorial. But, um, the special invites will be sent out to everyone like we did.
Yeah, ignore us, yeah.
And, and also, um, we will be mailing a, um, and sending out a traffic plan, a traffic map of how traffic will circulate around the campus. We'll be sending that in June, so parents can have a heads up on how they, when they enter the, the school campus, they can actually understand how to maneuver in that, in that counterclockwise rotation around the school. Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Good. And is it too ambitious to try to solicit, um, maybe Mr. Trefoletti to see if we could do the fall town meeting at the new school?
I would, um, it's, I'll check with Dan Riley to, and also with Dan Rodriguez from PAC TV to see that, that can be done. But I think that's a fantastic idea, so let me talk with him tomorrow.
Good.
I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow night.
Okay, now, now on Syme's House, uh, progress continues, the floors are being sanded, drywall, elevator work, et cetera, et cetera. The management team, the question about, you know, who's gonna take over the building and management, uh, that, that expects to be, that decision expects to be made early July, uh, if the bids come in correctly and meets, and it meets, uh, criteria. The salt shed, the funding is in place and it'll be going to bid very soon. Some other, uh, projects, the North Plymouth Fire Station, uh, has still not yet passed papers, so that's being delayed, there's some attorneys working on it. The funding is in place, um, for the, for the, uh, owner's project manager and design at this point for that. The maritime facility, um, the, there is, there is no funding for construction as of this moment, they're waiting on grants. They expect it to go before town meeting in the spring. Uh, the sale of Mount Pleasant School, there are two pre-bids have come in, uh, enough, no decision has been, the remaining bids are due on May 22nd. The airport administration building, uh, that has come before the building committee now, is going to be put off until 2020, so we won't be discussing that anymore for a while. And those are all the projects we covered.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, the, the, um, with the, the parking garage, they're trying to find alternative ways in coming up with the different plans to maybe make it lesser or, or less expensive.
Yeah.
Because it came in so high. So, that's really kind of being held up and I don't know how it affects the, the total, uh, town hall, do you?
No, it's gonna open and it's just gonna minimize.
They're gonna be a little bit less packing than they hoped.
So, they're back to the one, just the surface level.
The surface level and the.
Yeah.
The idea at this point is to, uh, the deck, the deck system for the parking garage was, uh, a custom build. And they're looking at structures that may be prefabbed, that may be a little bit more cost effective.
There's one more item that is not on the agenda that Dr. Maestas spoke to at the building committee meeting. It seems to be a perennial, uh, a perennial question, is the school committee moving into town hall?
Oh, that's right.
So, we had probably a 20-minute discussion on that and perhaps you wanna fill the committee in on where we are.
Yeah, to, um, actually tomorrow night, uh, after our meeting, we, we can, we can talk, talk about that in detail. But it, it is the question of the, of the year for, for me, uh, what we're gonna do with town hall. And one of the ideas that I shared with the, uh, building committee and, and, you know, we've, we've been going round and round about this. And, and I said it was very clear that the beginning of this discussion, that the, that we did send a letter, I did send a letter to the board selectmen in November, December, that we were interested in, in taking ownership of the building. In January, we got a facilities report that indicated that there were a number of items that needed to be looked at. Um, and I said, you have to understand that under the best information that we had at the time of, of the request or, or the, the letter, um, we didn't know that the building had a, a number of needs. Now that we do, um, the idea of the, the thought of the school committee was to get some level of support to actually address those issues. And it, and we, I also mentioned that we really put this as far as, as capital and it didn't really make it on the list very high and it, it just got shot down. And of course, we knew that, uh, that our interest was really taking a look at the, the needs that we had on other capital issues and also Plymouth South High School. And that was very important to us. So, um, I did say that we would discuss it as a committee, the committee would discuss it, we'll talk about it tomorrow night. Um, we do have some thoughts on, uh, general, some funds that have been generated through the sale of items at South High School through the auction. We have got some level of support from, um, finance director and town manager that we could, uh, allocate those funds to, uh, be able to address some of the issues of South. But, um, we'll have a longer conversation tonight as to what the direction of the committee may be.
Right, tomorrow night we'll do it.
Tomorrow night, yes.
Yep. We kinda confused everybody with the way we did the capital, uh, outlay, trying to tack on to that. And I think we left half the town confused whether we wanted it, we didn't want it, where were we on it and, uh.
Yeah, I'm confused too, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not confused, I'm, I'm clear that if, if it costs too much money, we should walk away from it.
And, and to, you know, uh, Mr. Begley, I, I, I talked to you, uh, last week about this, after I brought it up at the building committee, after it was brought up at the building committee. Well, I just wanted you to know that it was a, of discussion. And I just want the community to know very clearly that we felt, the committee felt, and, and my team felt, it was important that we wouldn't, we didn't wanna blur town meeting. And we didn't wanna put this on as another expense to the community.
Right.
Because we were really concerned about all those other expenses that were coming to the table. And, um, here, here we are, we're faced with it now, town meeting is passed.
Correct.
And we're still dealing with, what do we do with town halls, so.
Right, and, and, you know, all the, all the stuff that we would have to pay for if we took over the building, um, if they sell the building, a contractor would do it, when they remodel the building. So, um, you know, all that has to go into the discussion and.
And the dilemma.
We just don't, so, I know we're gonna have more discussion on this, but we did, we don't, we just don't wanna, like we've already said numerous times, we don't take money away from our program that directly concerns the kids. I'd rather have every dollar go to a kid rather than.
Absolutely.
Fixing a roof that no one's quite sure how bad it is.
Yeah.
It just seems like a money pit, but. And you're right, it would, on all the other levels, it's beautiful, you know, it's closer to the middle of the town, it's, you know, we're not all the way out at the town border, um, it's bigger. But, it's also gonna be expensive, so.
But it also gives a dilemma to the town because of the storage of their records and things that they want.
They've known that for quite a while, I'm sure they've thought of other situations for that.
I don't think so.
We can talk tomorrow night, there's a lot to discuss.
That's their issue, that's not our issue, I don't think. Personnel announcement, Mrs. Fry. Fill us track where I was.
No problem. Um, we have one classified appointment, um, two short-term maternity leaves, one unpaid parole leave and three resignations. So, we have a lot of things coming in the next few weeks, so.
Very good. You know, this, before we do the next topic, it just popped into my head, are we, are we okay on the, uh, the, um, gowns for the ceremony this year? I, I didn't hear any confirmation from anybody, I just wanna make sure.
You sold out your Google Doc.
That last round, I think everybody responded.
I think we're good. Well, if you don't, you won't have one.
I have my, I have my real one at home, but the kids used to use it as a Halloween costume, so it's a little worn. Home education plans.
Yes, tonight we have two home education plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office and have met the requirements set forth by the Plymouth School Committee. And I recommend approval of the two plans in the agenda tonight.
I waited. I moved that we accept the two home education plans as presented.
Seconded by Dr. Sorenson. There we go. Please vote.
It's not coming up.
Not voting.
Yeah, it's not coming, not coming up.
Mr. Morgan is missing.
Have to rejoin maybe?
I was thinking.
Did your screen come back, Chris?
It did. If you went out and came back, you might have to join the group.
Yeah, the internet's slow tonight and it's, it's, I, I, it's not coming up, we're gonna have to do a hand vote.
We need an upgrade.
Okay, we'll do a hand vote then, uh, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Can always go, always go back to me making the vote.
We haven't had, uh, Mr. Halpern on our agenda in a while, probably should circle.
June 5.
We have him June 5.
Anybody else that you haven't heard from is on June 5.
There you go.
You're happy about that, aren't you?
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there a Homes Chauvinelli Scholarship this year?
No, they put it on pause, remember?
Right, but for how long, I mean?
It was two years they're putting it on pause.
I thought it was, oh, alright, I thought two years was up.
No, the thing I think he needs to talk to is, um, should always recap every two years, at least for the public, if not for us.
Yeah.
No, the homeschool is where I was going, on the homeschool.
He'll provide an, uh, update for us on the 5th.
Is it me or the numbers have dropped off? He's managing it differently now where he's getting them to submit them earlier.
I think it's a matter of thing, of, of, of the record-keeping and, uh, absolutely, they're coming in, in, in groups.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, cause remember.
It's really.
In years past, we used to like, you know, last week of school and we're approving homeschool.
It, it's, it's changed.
Right, I think more now you're seeing new, new families perhaps at this time that will be coming in. But you are getting a lot at the beginning of the year, which is good.
Perfect, so that's successful, whatever he's doing, keep doing it. And now we have. Perfect. So, that's successful. Whatever he's doing, keep doing it. And now we have the, uh, the warrant. Ms. Badger?
Where school committee members have provided with a co- copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S zero five eighteen seventeen dated May eighteenth, twenty seventeen, amount of $700,768.19 as presented.
I have a motion, I have seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? And please vote.
Your vote coming up.
Are you back? Oh, you're not, oh, I'm sorry, you're not back on?
No, it's...
You synced, though. You're, you're on the next page.
I'm synced, but it's not coming up.
Okay, let's do it the old-fashioned way. All those in favor? Unanimous. See how flexible we are? And now we have the, um, federal furnace disposal of equipments. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight we have 20 desks and 20 chairs that go with those desks that are beyond repair, and they're on the agenda tonight for your approval for disposal.
With the recommendation of administration?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Moved, second.
Who was the second?
Me.
Second was Mrs. Burgess.
She was asking, that's why I was...
Yeah, she's more important, because...
She was looking up. I don't know who's more important.
And we'll do this one also, the old way. And all those in favor? Unanimous.
Mine just went blank.
Oops, I hit the button out of habit. Sorry.
I did too.
Dr. Sorenson and I did.
Ignore that.
It's all right. She'll lock it anyway.
Mine just went blank. Oh, there's a, oh, okay, we're good.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So, this was my last meeting as chair. I wanna say since 2011, I've been the chair, and I've enjoyed it. Um, I have limitations that you guys now know about, which makes it impossible to keep doing this. So, um, I just wanna thank everybody, um, for, you know, being such a great committee. It's great working on this committee, and I look forward to another year.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you for everything.
For your hard work and...
Thank you. So, without objection, 10 o'clock, we're adjourned.